This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, February 2nd meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. We had a work session at 6:00 PM, which was a closed session in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege at this time. We were supposed to have Reverend Bill Maskey-Angelo from Moayoc United Methodist Church. I don't see him for the invocation, so I'll leave the invocation and pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Your Father, we thank you for this evening. You've allowed us to gather here in the freedom of the United States of America. We ask for your wisdom and your blessings, and that you will always continue to keep us to land with the free. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of agenda. I do have an amendment to the consent agenda for declaring some vehicles surplus that I believe a couple of the vehicles will go to the volunteer fire departments or either be sold on Gov. Deals Auction, right?
That's correct.
So I need to ask that, add that to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval.
I second it.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next agenda item is public comment. We have a whole bunch of people signed up tonight. We have the three little lights up there. You get three minutes. We ask that you abide by the time when you have the yellow. I believe you have 30 seconds left, Mr. McCree.
Yes.
And Mr. McCree will be in charge of time tonight. First, on public comment, we have Ms. Mary Etheridge, and I ask that, as always, you state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigation with the county since December 2011. A few meetings ago, Chairman O'Neil asked why I continued to speak and what did I want. If you look at the definitions of why and what, it is very obvious. Why? For what reason or purpose? The reason and purpose is to let the citizens of Currituck County know that what happened to me could happen to anyone in our county. I consider myself a good citizen, always paid my taxes on time, never caused any problems, love my county, and proud to live in Currituck. Just living a good life until in 2011, the commissioners thought a junkyard in Shawboro was an excellent idea. Now, folks, no one else thought it a good idea. Not the planning board, the planning staff, no one. And even the courts told them they were wrong. But guess what? They went against everyone's recommendation and approved it anyway. Well, fellow citizens, ask yourself how you would like a junkyard in your backyard, bordering your land, and within 600 feet of your home. And remember, if it can happen to me, it can happen to you too. The definition of what is it acts as a placeholder for the unknown information. So what do I want but to be compensated for something that was not my fault and for something that they knew was not fair. Again, fellow citizens, ask how you would like to spend your money when the commissioners knew every step of the way that they were doing what they were doing was wrong. Even their county attorney told them. So I would like to ask the commissioners, why do you think it's fair for a citizen to go through what I have endured? And what should you do to make a wrong right? Thank you.
Next, we have Tom. Is that Potion?
Dotion.
Okay. Yes, sir. Are you here to speak on an agenda item or for public comment?
I've just got a public comment.
Yes, sir. Come right on forward, sir.
Okay. My name is Tom Dotion. I live at 507 Putner Ridge Road in Moayoc. What I'd like to know is when they're going to clean the dishes out around my house because when it rains, it took six days last having rain for a dish to drink. And this time, there's still water in it. And I got swell in my yard, and water comes back into my yard from that dish that belongs to the county, I guess. But anyway, I could have put a boat out there a couple of years if I wanted to. So that needs to be taken care of. And I also need to know what the rule is to have a drain, pipe, put in a ditch to your property across from the road, if there is such a thing.
Mr. Dotion, could you get with Mr. Scanlon and give him your contact information?
I sure will.
So that he can contact you, and if there's something we can do to help you, at least we can start looking into it.
Yes, sir. I sure will.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Troy Breathwaite.
I have a letter, actually, I'd like to give to the commissioners and Mr. Scanlon and Mr. McCree.
Name and address.
Yeah. My name is Troy Breathwaite. I live at 189 Providence Drive in Moayoc. And I'd like to hand this letter over to Mr. Scanlon. I'm here tonight to express some concerns that I have about the proposed joint land use study for the relocatable over-the-horizon radar at Northwest Annex. And I would like to urge the commissioners not to participate in that study for the following reasons. First, it's a single issue that is related to the proposed wind turbine project out at Hales Lake. A joint land use study is, appears to be too far-reaching for a single issue such as this. And I believe that dialogue with the DOD over this issue can be handled in other ways other than entering into a more intrusive joint land use study. As seen in the first attachment, the vast majority of the 103 joint land use studies completed between 1985 and January of 2014 have been for air installations and firing ranges. So in this case, a joint land use study would be somewhat out of the norm for what they're normally used for. Joint land use studies can result in significant developmental restrictions on the study area. And if you look at the second attachment in the letter, it shows the range of the proposed study, which could encompass up to two-thirds of the county. It's a 25-mile range from Northwest, which would go as far down as Grandi, I believe. And participation in the proposed joint land use study doesn't appear to benefit Currituck or its citizens and may, in fact, result in significant long-term loss of county revenue and tax base. And finally, Currituck County already has its own comprehensive land use plan. I find another joint land use study to be duplicative. Camden County has already chosen not to participate in the study, and for these and other reasons, I urge the commissioners to do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breathwaite. Mr. Scanlon, I believe you've been to a couple of these meetings?
Yes, sir.
And do we not, this, the proposed reason for this is the radar facility at Northwest?
That is correct.
They have a five-mile cone that they need to protect?
Well, that's one of the challenges. Initially, it was five miles, and now that area of influence continually increases to where I believe the map, the last page you have seems to be pretty representative now of the area they're talking about. And I think Mr. Breathwaite just said that's 25 miles.
So that would mean that anything we do within that cone, we would have to have the Navy sign off?
Not sign off, per se, but the military certainly wants to have the opportunity to comment on the project. Their commentary to us is that they would want the opportunity to look at potential mitigation opportunities for those businesses that were located in that 25-mile area that could have a deleterious impact on the operations, the mission of the Roethlisberger Array.
One question, Mr. Scanlon. You said they'd want to have a comment as to any implication deleterious that it would have to national security. And I say national security, that would be the radar.
They've already determined that the, I mean, the Roethlisberger Array has already been given a designation of national security, so yes.
That's right. But would it, by becoming a signatory of a land use study, would that give them any other jurisdiction, authority, input as to anything else other than this forward-looking radar?
I'm not aware if it's going to give them any additional authority or powers than they currently already have. I think one of my concerns would be more for this board as we've had several work sessions with you regarding the making of proper motions and the need to find specific findings that a project is or is not compatible with your plans. And if you were to participate in this project and sign off, it would become an official plan of the county, and then you would have some obligation to determine that projects that come in are consistent with or inconsistent with this plan. So it actually, in my opinion, would put probably a little bit more responsibility on the Board of Commissioners versus the military. I think the military already has the mechanisms to come in to comment on any business that comes in that they feel like might have a direct impact on their operations.
I would just be, the reason I ask that, I would just be concerned that if we were to do this approving it, we wouldn't inadvertently also be approving something else, and that would have unintended consequences. And that's why, is this very limited? Or is it more encompassing or more amorphous, if you will, as to what their abilities could or could not be relative to any other project that they may have an interest in either promoting or restricting?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was, Mr. Scanlon and some other staff sat through one of the meetings. I think Mr. O'Neil, you did as well, early on. And I was there to listen. I asked some tough questions of them. I think Mr. Scanlon will tell you, specifically involving the OLF. Everyone knows my position on the OLF from back when that was a big deal. Fought it tooth and nail and continue to fight it. Certainly, I'm not in favor of it, would never be in favor of it. And I put that out there to them. And I told them, I said, "Is this another way of trying to work your way around to get some restrictions to where that was?" No, no, no. This is, this is dealing with the over-the-horizon radar capabilities, electromagnetics, and interference with that particular deal at Northwest. Take them at their word. I don't know. And I've sent you all an email or two. I just passed along information that I heard. I'm not trying to convince anyone to be or not to be a part of a land use plan. But I just felt, since I attended the meeting, it was incumbent upon me to at least inform you of what I heard. As I understand it, it's not a Navy plan whatsoever. Navy has nothing to do with the plan. It's a county plan or a tri-county, tri-city, or however many that is involved in the deal, a plan that would be put together. And at any point in time, no one had to sign off on anything. At any point in time, anyone who was attending the meetings could back out of it, not sign anything, not be a part of it. Is that what you want?
That is correct.
So, like I say, I'm certainly not here to say that we should or shouldn't. I'm just passing along what I heard as being the factual information from them.
Well, I mean, I think it begs the question, then, if they can already do that, then why do they need us to do this?
Because I'll tell you what they're after. They're after the wind turbines. And if they can get the wind turbines out of anybody's land use plan, then that devalues that property, which makes it a lot more attractive if they need it for an OLF. And I'll leave it at that. Next, Troy Kavanaugh?
I put my name on the log mistake there.
Are you signed up? You want to speak to something else?
No.
No? Okay. And then we have Louis Rosso?
My apologies. I also put my name there, and I'm just here to speak about the Monterey Shore space threat.
Yes, sir. All right. That's all we have signed up for public comment. Was there anyone who didn't get a chance to speak that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment and move to our first agenda item is administrative reports, Almoral Commission stewardship report. Ms. Gilbert, why don't you introduce our guest?
Kathy Davidson is the Director of the Almoral Commission, and she's come in tonight to give us a stewardship report of what's been happening with the commission. And she has provided a brochure to each one of us about the Almoral Commission. Kathy came on to the commission in September and has, right?
Yes.
It was a long, drawn-out process.
Labor Day.
But she has done a tremendous job thus far. And after her report, I'll make other comments. But she has really stepped up to the plate and been just an asset to the commission as doing a superb job. So don't prove me wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner Gilbert. I appreciate it. And thank you all for having me here tonight in Currituck County. It's a pleasure to be here and to discuss the Almoral Commission and the services that we've provided to you and the residents and businesses of Currituck County over the last year. First and foremost, the Almoral Commission was founded in 1969 by the General Assembly. We are the region's council of government made up of 10 counties. Currituck, Chawan, Dare, Camden, Gates, Hyde, Pasquotank, Perquimence, Terrell, and Washington. We encompass 2,700 miles. We are the largest council of government out of the 16 remaining council governments in the state of North Carolina. Our objective and mission is to improve member governments' ability to enhance the quality of life of their citizens, as well as to provide direct services, grant writing and administration, planning and assessment, program development, which also includes economic development. And one of the services we provide, which is our most popular service amongst our 10 counties, is senior nutrition. We serve between homebound meals and congregate meals in three sites. In Currituck County, we serve 19,450 meals. And what this means is 286 individuals receive meals through our senior nutrition program. They have to be, if they're in the congregate site, they're age 60 or above. And if they're receiving homebound meals, they have to have a doctor's waiver that states that they are homebound, and they do not have a caregiver to provide assistance with them in meal preparation. And for these services, the county contributes $45,418. That seems like a lot, but when you break it down, it's $2.34 a meal, which is USDA-approved and provided for Currituck County by a business here. The jail has a contract through the commission, and they provide the meals here in Currituck County. The actual cost for the meal, and this is what the commission is charged, is $4.90, a difference of $2.56. When you look at area agency on aging, we provide a great many services between medical transportation, general transportation, adult daycare services. If someone needs a caregiver coming into their home, we provide that. In-home aid, legal hours for respite care, also caregiver supplement services, senior games, and incontinent supplies, all for aging. You'll see that residents in Currituck County receive 600, excuse me, 6,130 hours, and those services are to 116 clients. Again, services to those that are 60 years of age or older. And the county's contribution to match these services is $17,373 or $2.83 per service. And the actual cost per service is $37.10. That's the difference that the Almoral Commission writes additional grants for or does fundraising for, a difference of $34.27. It's a good return on investment. And then workforce development. I'm excited about our workforce development and the services that our staff provides. Currently, we have four youth participating in our youth services. They're getting their soft skills. They're receiving soft skills. As businesses come to the commission and work with our workforce development program, one of the things that they have said is we need people that are going to come to work, that are going to know how to be respectful, that are going to know how to dress in the right environment. And we are teaching and providing those skills to four youth. We also have two businesses that are training, on-the-job training, and receiving $4,600 to provide that on-the-job training. All of this is at no cost to the county. And the workforce development, the cost per service is $56,102.23. Again, a great return on your investment. We're looking, looking at the Rural Planning Organization. I know we hear a great deal about the RPO, as we like to call it. And the RPO represents the county in transportation planning and bike and ped planning and the comprehensive plant, comprehensive transportation plants for each county. We have one, one client being the county. The county's cost is $4,048. The actual cost for the services is $14,453.10. Part of the rural transportation is being an advocate for our counties and making sure that the information that is needed by the counties is out, that our legislators are receiving that information. A few weeks ago, through the SPOT 3.0 planning session that's going on with the work group associated with the Board of Transportation, there was some information needed about the evacuations during hurricanes. And our planning director during the Christmas holiday, with the assistance of your EMS Director and the EMS Director in Dare County, put together all this information to get it back to the Board of Transportation and the SPOT 3.0 work group within a week's time. And again, they're looking at the importance of evacuations and how it affects Currituck County and the region when it comes to getting people out of the region during times when there is evacuation called. And then economic development and administration. Historically, the Almoral Commission has not been involved in economic development, even though we are the cognizant funding agency from the federal government for economic development. We have economic development grant program as well as a revolving loan fund. But up until this past year, we have not been aggressive with economic development. And one of the things that we're doing this year, we've started the regional economic development planning, finalized and sent out the draft for the vision and mission statement. And looking at the region of our 10 counties and three subregions, we're all different. We have different characteristics that make us unique, but wanting to move forward with that. And at the last board meeting of the Almoral Commission, challenged the board that we look at economic development, not just as a support, but all as an operations plan and action plan to move economic development forward. With the change in state funding to local agencies, it's important that we step up and utilize the funds that the Almoral Commission has received from the federal level, and we are doing that. Currently, we also have one, we have two clients, one being the county, another being a homeowner that is having their home rehabilitated. We have community development block grants, and we have one homeowner having their home rehabilitated through a grant through the state at $140,000. The county's cost for, for these services, as well as additional plant, planning and programming. And also, the, the Almoral Commission has recently received the designation of having an advisory role on the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, who is our counterpart in Hampton Roads. So we recognize the importance of that Hampton Roads connection. These services cost the county $15,707. The actual cost of services is $39,289.15. Just to let you know, the $140,000 project, there was no match for the county. That is straight grant writing and program development that the Almoral Commission provides to the county. And then if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Or you can feel free to call me or send me an email. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions from the board? Kathy has done a tremendous job, like I said, since she's come on board with the Almoral Commission. And she's individually taken her department heads and really revamped the program. And she's, she's got a team concept, which is really proven to be just outstanding. I just, I'm just, I've been on the Almoral Commission for two years and currently serving as the Vice Chair. And I'm just, I'm just seeing great things just in the six months. So she's really revitalized the staff and energized them, and we're getting a lot more bang for our buck, so to speak. So thank you again, and good luck with the rest of the visits to the other counties.
Good. Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Anyone have any questions? We do thank you for coming tonight.
Good. Thank you.
Have a good evening and a safe trip.
I will. In fact, my son's at his godparents up in Moayoc, so.
Well, have a safe trip to Moayoc.
I will. Thank you. I didn't knock to her.
Our next business items are public hearings. The first one is PV 1424, the Currituck Shooting Club. And, yes, sir?
Use permit.
Yes. And this is a special use permit. I have a sheet full of people that signed up. Everyone that wishes to speak needs to come forward and be sworn in. If you do not come forward and be sworn in, you cannot speak to this agenda item. We may have to double up and do it twice.
Twice.
Or more than twice.
Just touch it.
I think we got more people than are on the list. All right. Everybody that can get, we're gonna, we're gonna do another one. We're gonna have to do it twice. Everybody that can get your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
You are sworn. Anyone that did not fail themselves to be sworn at that time, please come forward, and we'll swear you in now as well. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
We got one more.
Is that everybody? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. This is a special use permit. I'm going to let Mr. McCree share a little bit of information about how the hearing will be conducted at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is different than your capacity when you sit as a legislative body. body, specifically when you're considering zoning text amendments and zoning map amendments. In this particular proceeding, you will be sitting as a quasi-judicial body, in that you will be making certain findings of fact in order to make a determination as to whether this application before you meets the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. A special use or special use permit refers to a situation in which a particular kind of use is permitted in a zoning district, not as a matter of right, but with certain conditions that may be placed upon that use to limit its impact on surrounding properties. Pursuant to the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, this board must be able to find from evidence presented during the course of this hearing the following facts: that the application is complete, that the proposed use of the applicant's property is among those listed in the table of permitted uses as a use permit, the conditions proposed meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, the special use permit will not, or the use permit will not endanger the public health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans of the county, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, and law enforcement, and other county facilities. As I said a moment ago, for the purposes of this hearing, you sit as a quasi-judicial body. That means the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with procedural rules much like those of a trial court, and to provide for the constitutional right to due process, such as sworn testimony of witnesses, no reliance upon hearsay testimony for a critical finding of fact, and the direct and cross-examination of witnesses. Accordingly, as you just did, Mr. Chairman, all those offering testimony have been placed under oath, and only sworn testimony will be considered by the Board of Commissioners to make its decision. The Board of Commissioners' findings must be supported by competent material and substantial evidence presented during the course of the hearing. Competent evidence is generally understood to mean that evidence which is legally admissible in a court of law. Pursuant to Section 168, 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, the requirement for competent evidence does not prevent reliance by the Board of Commissioners on evidence that would not normally be admissible in a court of law if the evidence was admitted without objection, or the evidence appeared to be sufficiently trustworthy and was admitted under such circumstances that it was reasonable for the Board of Commissioners to rely upon it. As further provided by Section 168, 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, competent evidence does not include, and this is important, it does not include the opinion testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following matters. First of all, you may not rely upon lay witness testimony regarding the use of property in a particular way would affect the value of other property, that the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety, or that, or other matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under rules of evidence applicable to the trial courts. So bottom line, if there are any issues that are related to the use of property in a particular way and its potential impact on adjacent property, or that the increase in vehicular traffic may result in a danger to the public safety, those areas must be testified to or evidence presented from an expert who is able to lay a foundation and establish their educational background or other basis for their expertise in property valuation or traffic safety. In addition, the Board of Commissioners may not make a critical finding of fact based solely on hearsay. Hearsay means a statement not made at the hearing that the proponent seeks to have admitted as evidence of the truth of the matter in that statement. A witness or expert needs to be present so questions can be asked about the particulars of their statement. An example is a petition which is not valid evidence that can be considered in making a finding of fact. You may also experience circumstances in which someone may want to hand up a letter from someone who may not be able to be here tonight. That is also evidence which you may not consider during the course of this proceeding, because as a bottom line, that individual who's setting forth a statement in a letter is not here to be examined by you or to be cross-examined by those in opposition or the applicant with the matter pending before you. Now, we're gonna proceed with this hearing in the following manner. The planning staff will present its findings and recommendations to the board. The applicant will be asked then to come forward. Before that, though, you may have the opportunity to ask questions of the planning staff. The applicant may have opportunities to ask questions of the planning staff, as those in opposition will as well. The applicant will then have the opportunity to present their case. You have an opportunity, of course, at any time to ask questions of the applicant or their witnesses. The opposition has the opportunity to ask or cross-examine those witnesses as well. Those in opposition to the application may then put on their case. You, of course, have the opportunity to ask questions of those persons in opposition and their witnesses, as well as the applicant will have the opportunity to ask questions or cross-examine those in opposition or their witnesses. Following that, there will be a short opportunity for the applicant to rebut any evidence that was presented during the course of the opposition's presentation to you. That will be the manner in which we will proceed. It should be noted, however, and no one should feel intimidated by the fact that should they come forward and present testimony, they may be subject to cross-examination. That, again, is part of our due process and requirement. And again, no one should feel intimidated or feel uneasy about presenting whatever testimony or evidence they have to present to the board during the course of the hearing. Now, as another matter of business before you begin, an important aspect of a quasi-judicial proceeding is that a party has a right to due process. And an important part of that right is that the decision you make, or the decision that is being made about their application, is made by a body that is fair and impartial. Part of being fair and impartial is that you not consider any evidence, comments, communications that you may have received outside of the course of the hearing tonight. Again, you may only consider that evidence which is presented during the course of this hearing in making your decision. So to start out, I would ask, first of all, that any of you, if you've had any conversation or communication with anyone with regard to this particular matter, either for or against, that now would be your opportunity to express what communication you may have had, and if you've had such communication, whether despite that communication, you were still able to sit on this case and make a fair and impartial decision based solely on the evidence presented to you tonight, and not that which you may have heard, discussed, or that you may have inadvertently discussed or been communicated with by someone outside this hearing. Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll look to you to ask your fellow board members whether any of them have a communication they feel like they may need to disclose, and then whether they're able to make a fair and impartial decision despite that.
I think we have several hands going up, but I want to go ahead and disclose first that I have been contacted by parties on both sides of this issue. I have received unsolicited phone calls, unsolicited emails, unsolicited comments, but I do not think it will affect my ability to sit impartially tonight to hear this case.
I'd like to echo that. I can say that I have also received communications, electronic and otherwise. But I will also add, or will tell you, that any decision that I make in this matter or any other matter will be satisfactory and to myself based on the evidence presented.
Mr. Chairman, I too have received phone calls and electronic communications and have not engaged, but I feel that I can make a fair and equitable decision tonight on the facts presented.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to state as well, I did receive a phone call regarding this matter. I did not comment or engage in any conversation after that. And I do feel that even though I did receive that phone call, I can make a honest decision based on evidence presented tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to say the same thing. I've certainly had a few phone calls and a few email correspondence, unsolicited. Can't remember in what timeframe, whether it was before the special use permit became a factual deal or before that. I mean, it's been ongoing for some time, and certainly will have no impact on my decision and be based on the facts that we hear tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also say that I have received some conversations prior to me becoming a member of this board. I have been both to the shooting range and to several private homes that have said they could hear the noise. I believe I can make a fair and impartial decision.
Mr. Chairman, I have had the opportunity to shop at Mr. Moser's Enterprise and have, in fact, conducted and had conversations, again, with Mr. Hall prior to becoming a county commissioner, but have actually had a sit-down with Mr. Flora, who wanted to express his opinion on the issues. I had attempted to tell Mr. Flora prior to that meeting that I would not be commenting on the issue before this board, and attempted to ensure that that was not brought up. However, comma, clearly, that was the agenda before me. Based upon that information, I too believe I can make an impartial decision based upon the facts presented here this evening.
Thank you.
That's everyone.
Mr. McCree?
Two other quick points, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the burden of proof in this matter is on the applicant. That means the applicant has the responsibility of putting forth sufficient information and evidence to this body in order to support their application and to show that they have met the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. Once, however, that the applicant has met that burden, the burden then shifts to those who may be in opposition to the application. Secondly, because I believe there are some attorneys may be involved on both sides of this issue tonight, there may be times where, as they make a record, should this go to another forum or proceeding, there may be some objections to evidence or statements that may be made by some who present evidence to the board. Again, no one should feel intimidated about that. That is just, again, part of the process and part of the requirement to keep a record should a court ultimately review this matter at a later date. With that, Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to proceed then, I would ask Mr. Woody, the planning director, to present the staff's analysis and any information staff has for the board to consider tonight.
Before we get started, could I ask someone on staff to maybe cut the thermostat down a little bit? There's a lot of people in a small room tonight, so if we could cut the thermostat down, that would be great.
I would like to get a bottle of water.
All right, Mr. McCree, you can...
Mr. Woody, if you'd present staff's case analysis.
Thank you, Mr. McCree and Mr. Chairman. This is, as you have mentioned, a use permit to operate an outdoor shooting range. The property is located at 913 Kerituck Highway, which is in the Moyoc Township. You can see on the aerial photograph, the subject property is currently used as a sand mine. The board probably recognizes this property as a use permit application, was in front of the board a few months ago for this particular mine, which was approved with conditions. Property is currently zoned, currently zoned heavy industrial. You can see on the aerial photograph there, the subject property is heavy industrial, but of course, it's surrounded on two sides with GB, which is general business, which is a commercial zoning district. And then on the other two sides, it is surrounded by agricultural zoning. The Currituck County Land Use Plan designates this area as full service. As the board is familiar, full service is a designation given to areas that are anticipated to have higher rates of growth. So a full-service area would be an area you would see residential growth, commercial growth, investment by the county in terms of water, sewer, county services. And then, of course, we recently completed the Moyoc Small Area Plan for this part of the county, and that particular plan anticipates this area to be limited service, which is still a growth area that's identified by the county. However, it's not an area that would grow typically as intensely as, say, a full-service area would. So those are the two planning designations for this particular property. The site's almost 60 acres, but what the caveat is, that's the entire tract of land that holds a mine. However, the shooting range itself is on a much smaller area. You can see on this plan submitted by the applicant, the range area itself is just under two acres, so while the whole site's 60 acres, the range area itself is actually quite small in comparison to the site. This is a request for a use permit made by TEM Tactical on behalf of the Currituck Shooting Club. The applicant's requesting this permit. At one point, there were some firing activities that were occurring on the site. This was brought to attention of the applicant. They have subsequently filed for this use permit to bring the site into compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance. Applicant states that this will be a private shooting range, open to club members only. Range is at the bottom of the sand pit. According to the applicant, the backstop or the berms are approximately 25 feet in height. And of course, the applicant has also provided that, and an adopted EPA plan to assure an environmentally safe facility will be provided. As Mr. McCree mentioned, this is a use permit, which means in addition to evaluating the site plan and the use itself, you have to make sure, have to determine that the use meets certain criteria that are outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance. I'm gonna say those again. One is that this use, the outdoor shooting range, will not endanger the public health or safety. It will not injure the value of abutting property and be in harmony with the area in which it is proposed, be in conformity with the land use plan, and then it does not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. If the board can make findings that each of these criteria are satisfied, you would then be compelled to issue the permit, provided it meets the ordinance. However, if you cannot make these findings, then you would then be compelled to not issue the permit. Staff has provided, as we always do, suggested findings for each of these criteria that you have to evaluate. Staff has found that based on the information submitted by the applicant and the application of the ordinance, that in fact, three of these findings can be made in the affirmative. However, I will note that staff has a concern with the finding that the use does not endanger the public health or safety. One of the requirements of the ordinance is that a registered engineer certify that the design specifications and plans for range construction are in compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance. And I want to highlight that that certification is for range construction, not range operation. So keep in mind, this certification is a way, is a requirement in the ordinance that can, the staff can make the determination that this plan set for this range is in compliance with the UDO. To this point, the staff has not received a certification from a registered engineer, and therefore, staff believes this finding cannot be met or cannot be made by the board. Additionally, the technical review committee reviews this request, and as the board knows, the technical review committee is the technical staff that work here within the county. So this is the group of folks that review plans and applications from the different disciplines, not just planning, but the county engineer, building inspections, and different departments. The TRC also recommends a denial, again, based on the lack of the certification from a registered engineer. When this went to the planning board, there were still several outstanding comments additionally that were not met. I will note that subsequently, following the planning board, the applicant has submitted information to address these outstanding concerns. I want to hit those real quickly. The engineer has met with the applicant and determined that the accessway is of adequate design, construction, and width and capacity to allow the mine operation to occur, as well as the shooting range. So the access has been deemed to meet the UDO. One thing that remains is the parking lot is shown on the plan, but the parking areas will have to be improved. The engineer and the applicant have met on site and agreed to three inches of material and parking blocks to establish a parking area, including one concrete handicap parking space. So we feel comfortable that there are arrangements made to make sure the parking meets the ordinance. Additionally, the applicant provided a landscape plan, which was needed. The applicant met with the chief building inspector to discuss handicap accessibility. As you know, all sites are subject to the ADA or American Disabilities Act. The chief building inspector and the applicant have come to an agreement on how to use an alternative method to gain compliance with the American Disabilities Act, so that's been resolved. Then finally, early on, there were some discussions about consistency with NC Deaner and the mining permits that were issued to the property. However, as part of the use permit issued for the mine, those permits were amended to exclude this two-acre area from the mining permit, and that resolved most of the issues that occurred between the mine and the shooting range use. Again, those are issues that were resolved following the planning board recommendation, but we still have the one issue with the certification. And the planning board heard this... And the planning board heard this request at their December meeting, I believe, and the planning board also recommended denial of this. The reasons given by the planning board was, one, that the necessary recommendations required by the TRC were not completed, and that was a lot of the things I just went over. But additionally, that the suggested finding cannot be made, that the use will not endanger the public health or safety because there was not a certification provided that the range was built to the UDO standards. Now, that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions the board has.
Questions for Mr. Woody?
I have one. When we originally sat to deliberate or determine what the UDO amendment was going to be that would allow outdoor ranges, there was some discussion, I mean, there was quite a bit of discussion. And what I remember specifically is kind of a general discussion that ranges would be built and operated in conformity with the NRA guidelines and rules, which are an established document, I understand, and they're pretty much based on a former, I think it's a Johns Hopkins finding, that was done and commissioned by the US Army. When I was going through this a few days ago, I see now that, and as you've talked about, I see that there is a requirement in our ordinance that it be certified by an engineer. And looking at the NRA requirements, they suggest that a engineer, or an engineer, I'm sorry, certify this, but they don't require it. And could you speak to that relative to the general comments that the board had when they were originally looking at this about the NRA comment, NRA guidelines?
That is correct. In the NRA Range Source Book, it is recommended that people that are interested in constructing ranges hire the help of professional engineers to help them through that process. That was partly the basis for the standard that ended up in the ordinance that you're using to weigh this case tonight. And as a matter of fact, the Range Source Book is actually, it's a source for the benefit of folks that are investing in building ranges. So, none of it's actually mandatory. It's just best practice put forward by the NRA. What I would note is that in doing the certification, an engineer would have to evaluate that book. And again, that certification is, one, is part of it, is that the range is consistent with the NRA Source Book, but also is that the range is consistent with all the other items in the ordinance as well. So, part of what the engineer would have to do is evaluate the best practice, including that NRA Source Book, and certify that the range plans as proposed would be consistent with that.
I guess just to clarify, and this would be to add on to our county attorney's admonition, what we are looking about tonight is, well, let me back up. If our ordinance mandates that there be an engineering certification, then are there any parameters short of that? I.e., if there would be other witnesses that may or may not provide information, other sources of information that could speak to, I guess, the questions that an engineer certification would speak to? Are we precluded from using that as evidence? Or would it meet the hurdle, maybe this is a legal question, would that meet the hurdle to overcome the written language of our ordinance that we have to follow?
The general rule, you may not, during the course of this proceeding, amend or modify your ordinance. So, the plain reading of the ordinance as to this particular item is that a registered engineer shall certify that the plan specifications or design meets the county's UDO requirements.
I might elaborate a little bit, and I think that you could probably use evidence presented tonight to help you make the findings. So, the extent to which you apply that registered engineer certificate to the findings, you may have some flexibility. But as Mr. McCree said when he started the hearing, at the end of the day, the application still has to meet the ordinance, and that's something that can't be overcome until either the ordinance has changed or the certification is provided.
Mr. Woody, do we require a certified engineer stamp of plans for subdivisions and various other things that come before the Board of Commissioners?
We do. There's certainly other uses and things that require engineer certifications, surveyor certifications. I mean, it's everything from subdivisions to culverts. So, there's a number of items and action items in our UDO that requires different types of professional certifications.
But do we waive those for others?
Not unless the ordinance provides a provision to waive those, no.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Woody?
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me real quick. I heard residential, does it also have that same thing for commercial?
Do we have certifications for commercial?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it would not be appropriate to allow for the applicant to ask any questions of Mr. Woody if the applicant desires. And if you come to the podium and identify yourself and the party that you're representing.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Schilling. I live at 149 Mariners Way here in Moyauk, actually right around the corner, and I represent the Currituck Shooting Club. Just a couple of questions for Mr. Woody.
And that's for the record, identify that you are an attorney.
I am an attorney. I'm a licensed attorney here in the state of North Carolina. One of the options that the board would have tonight would be to allow adoption of a use permit subject to conditions approval, correct?
That's correct.
And one of those subject to conditions approval would be the engineering survey? That would be an option that the board would have available to it?
I think they could do that.
Should I address that question maybe to Mr. McCree?
Well, it is a critical find to be made, at least as it relates from staff's testimony with regard to the public safety finding that has to be made. As a general rule, a board can approve a use permit with conditions, which they regularly do.
And just going through your case analysis, just going over the other items, first of all, just maybe I should clarify. Mr. McCree, is the case analysis made part of the record of the board?
Yes, it is. Everything in the agenda package is part of the record.
All right. And just to clarify for the record, the other issues, staff has found that the use will not injure the value of the adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located?
Based on the information received to this point, that is correct.
And the staff has also found that it's probably true that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans?
Yes. Based on the information received to this point, that is correct.
Okay. And the staff's also found that it's true that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities?
That is correct.
So, the issue the staff has is essentially just whether or not there's a registered engineer who has certified that the standards have been met. Is that correct?
That is the principal issue. That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all the questions I've got. Thank you.
One follow-up. Is that proper for me to?
Yes.
And the chairman has brought it, made me think about it. Has this board or any previous board ever in a special use permit setting approved the matter before it where ordinance requirements were still pending, i.e. certifications by the state or from the state or anything? Have we ever? I guess to speak to Mr. Schilling's question, subject to approval, have we ever done that before in a similar set of circumstances?
I would say, and that's partly why I answered Mr. Schilling's question the way I did, there are instances when there are minor modifications to plans, or sometimes there's information that's needed that has been approved as a condition of approval. That tends to be minor in nature, and it tends to be things that are, you know, part of an administrative procedural process. Now, practice in my time here, I'm not aware of the board generally approving permits with conditions with specific ordinance language, I mean, with a direct ordinance requirement needing to be met. It tends to be minor things, plan corrections, for example.
Would state permits necessary for the awarding or of the approval of the applicant's, pending state permits that are required that were...
I'm not aware of approving something with outstanding state permits, no, sir.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
What information was provided to you by the applicant to make those determinations? Because I don't see it in my write-up. I've been reading it, specifically, number one, the use will not endanger the public health and safety. What specifically was provided to the staff?
In terms of that finding, the first one, I'll flip back to the staff report. Typically, what we've done with that is, once an application is, and again, we didn't make that finding in affirmative, but what we've done is, once an application's put together that meets the ordinance, meets the public safety requirements, we generally move that forward with an affirmative recommendation because the ordinance in and of itself is in place to cover public or health and safety issues. So, for example, the initial recommendation for denial was based on not only the certification, but the lack of parking improvement and things of that nature, ADA access. Once the basic ordinance requirements are met, unless there's something that we've compelling we knew otherwise, we generally move forward with an affirmative recommendation at that point, at the time of the staff's review.
Okay. And one other question. It says the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. What was provided to you by the applicant? And the reason I'm asking that is Mr. McCree has said that the applicant has to provide that information.
And I'll need to look in the packet to identify that specifically.
You can continue.
All right. If there are further questions from members of the board, then any in opposition may have the opportunity now to ask questions of Mr. Woody. I see Mr. Mullin, if you'd please come forward, introduce yourself and who you're representing.
I'm Herbert Mullin. I'm an attorney. I live in Lisbon City. I'm representing the opposition.
Thank you.
And my question for Mr. Woody very simply is, you haven't received the engineering report at this time that your ordinance requires of the applicant, have you?
We have not. That's correct.
And you haven't, have you received any affirmative findings from the applicant regarding the public safety of the shooting range?
I need to look at his application materials to answer that question.
Okay.
We did. The applicant did submit, he did submit application, and it's in the agenda packets, and it has responses to each of those required findings.
I know you made responses, but I was wondering upon which you made those respondents, what evidence was presented to you?
Evidence is what was provided in the application by the applicant, as well as application of zoning standards.
But you don't have any specific things provided by the applicant, other than just their opinion?
I have the information submitted by the applicant in their application.
What did they submit to you that showed that it would be in the public safety?
So, for example, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. The Currituck Shooting Club incorporated a selected location that is the perfect setting for an outdoor shooting range. The range is located in the bottom of an inactive sand pit bordered on all sides with a backstop berm, a minimum height of 25 feet. The Currituck Shooting Club has adopted an EPA plan to assure an environmentally safe facility. We are committed to reclaiming and recycling materials expended as a result of shooting. We've developed prototype-tested target systems that contain all shot for reclaiming materials. The target systems that we have developed have resulted in capturing 100% of the expended lead and shock. So, those are the statements provided by the applicant for that finding.
You based your finding upon the applicant's statement to you?
Partly, yes.
And what otherwise did you utilize?
The application of the UDO.
Okay.
Which is why, for example, the fact that we're not meeting a portion of the UDO is what triggered our recommendation for denial on that particular finding.
Okay. And how about the reduction in value of the adjoining properties?
What the applicant submitted for that was, the adjoining and abutting property that borders the facility is agricultural and will not interfere with adjoining properties. In addition, the property is bordered on all sides with mature standing trees and foliage. This greatly reduces noise as well as maintains the natural setting.
Did you view the site in question?
We did. The staff, I did not, I've been to the site, but the staff that did the case analysis did visit the site.
Did they find substantial trees or just a hedgerow?
I would say there's fairly substantial trees around the site. We have an aerial photograph, so...
Right. But as the aerial photograph, if the top is the north, the south and west side don't have many trees at all, do they?
The south and west side do not. That's correct.
And this site is just slightly less than a half a mile from the grammar school there in Moyauk, isn't it?
I cannot tell you the exact distance from the middle school.
But it's not very far, is it?
It depends on what you qualify as very far.
It's around a half a mile, is it not?
That seems appropriate. That seems approximately correct.
And my question is, if you consider what kind of bullets are going to be shot at a shooting preserve?
Are you asking me what kind of bullets?
Yes, sir.
I think that's probably a more appropriate question for the applicant. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And the range of bullets and things like that, okay. Thank you.
I have a question?
Yes.
Just for clarification, because this is the first I'm hearing of this, relative to the one-half mile, isn't that relevant pursuant to our ordinance occupied dwelling? I'm assuming a school's an occupied dwelling.
It is. It has to be more than a half mile, or it wouldn't be here in front of you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that because I thought I understood you two agree with Mr. Mullin that it was somewhat less than half a mile. Maybe I misunderstood.
I don't know the distance. I don't have an exact measure for the school, but it has to, it has to at least be a half mile.
I know. I know what it has to be. I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
All right. So, you don't know if it's a half a mile?
I know it's more than a half a mile, but I don't know what the distance is.
Okay. So, you know it's more?
Yes, or it wouldn't be here.
Thank you.
There are no further board questions for Mr. Woody than the applicant, Mr. Schilling, they put on its case.
Thanks, sir.
The first witness I'd like to call is Troy Moser. I guess you want Troy to... Am I correct? The three-minute does not apply to us, correct? Sir, if you would identify yourself?
My name is Troy Moser. I live at 112 South Street in Moyauk, North Carolina.
And you operate TEM Tactical?
Yes, I do.
And you're also, what's your connection with the Currituck Shooting Range Incorporated?
I'm the director and president.
And there is an existing shooting range that's located within the Moyauk Township?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And who developed that range?
I did. Our club did.
All right. Just going through the UDO requirements themselves, is that shooting range located on a site or parcel within an area of at least 10 acres?
Yes, it is.
Is any part of that shooting range located within 200 feet of any property line and less than one half a mile from an existing residential dwelling, school, waterfowl impoundment, or Currituck Game Commission sanctioned waterfowl rest area?
It meets all sections in Section C.
Okay. So, it is not located that close?
It is not.
Okay. Have you hired a registered engineer to certify compliance with the other standards that are set forth in the UDO?
Yes, I have.
And what firm did you hire for those purposes?
County recommended Hyman and Robey.
And how long ago did you hire the firm of Hyman and Robey to provide these plans?
We've been working with Hyman and Robey on different topics concerning that area for four, five months, actually after we left him alone until he completed the requirements for the mine, for Billy Spruils. And then he came to work on our area.
All right. And how long ago, then, did he start the work on preparing a certification that the design specifications and plans for the range were in compliance with the standard? standards of the UDO?
I'd have to say about four to five weeks.
And Mr. Hyman and his firm were recommended to you by county staff, is that correct?
Yes, they were.
And has Mr. Hyman actually prepared any documentation that has been submitted to the board?
I believe he has complied with everything they're capable of doing. Yes, site survey, handicap parking, handicap parking, bathroom facilities, so forth.
About a week ago, did Mr. Hyman contact you regarding the NRA standards? What I'm referring to is subsection D of the UDO, the requirements from the NRA range sourcebook?
Yes, sir. Actually, a week from today.
All right. And, and did he indicate to you he would not be able to provide certification on those points?
They're not, that's not their expertise, nor are they insured to, to certify guidelines and recommendations. There's no formula mathematics at that point.
Was that the first time you learned that the registered engineer would not be able to provide that certification?
Yes, it is.
And what steps have you taken since then to ensure compliance with the UDO?
We contacted the NRA directly, which came out to the site and actually did a specific site report concerning our range, made recommendations, and gave us a very good review of what we've already completed. We also contacted a independent consultant, a PhD in environmental protection.
I didn't ask you that, so we'll move to that in a moment. Just dealing with the NRA requirements. It is your intention for the Currituck Shooting Club to comply in all aspects with the recommendations from the NRA, the people who produced the range sourcebook?
Yes, yes, we are. In fact, we're 80% compliant, about 15% that needs to do minor modifications to bring it in full compliance.
Is it possible to get a registered engineer to certify that compliance until the changes are made?
Please state, say that again?
Is it possible for a registered engineer to go out and look at your site and say it currently complies until those modifications that the NRA has requested have been made?
No, they need to be completed before a registered engineer can come out and actually certify the range.
And why have you not gone ahead and made the changes that the NRA has recommended?
It's hard to go forward with a multimillion dollar application without initial approval.
There would be substantial cost involved in making the changes that the NRA has requested?
Yeah, yeah, to get complete compliance, yes.
And hiring an engineer to certify that compliance would also carry with it a substantial cost?
Yes, it would, but we're fully committed to making sure that we meet all the compliances set forth by the NRA.
You're willing to expend those monies to bring it into compliance and get the certification, but you need to get some sort of approval before you can spend that money?
Yes, sir. Way too deep already.
Okay. There was also concern regarding subsection E, which dealt with the EPA's best management practices for lead at outdoor shooting ranges?
Yeah, that's a very specialized area to get a PE or a certification from an engineer.
Again, did Mr. Hyman indicate that his firm would be unable to provide you a registered engineer's certification on that issue?
They are not qualified to provide that certification.
Again, when did you learn?
Monday. Monday, a week from today.
And what steps have you taken since then to ensure compliance with those standards?
We brought on one of the renowned consulting EPA for, for range, actually firing ranges. They do this all over the United States. This is not the first time they've done it, and we brought the gentleman here to represent that today.
And his recommendations would be followed?
To the letter, and it's also a mentorship. It's not just a one-time deal. This is a, a total commitment, even after the range closes 50, 75 years down the, down, you know, down the road. It's not just a one-time thing.
Will the club operate as an outdoor shooting range prior to the changes that will be required by the NRA or your expert regarding the EPA's best management practices and a certification from an engineer that those changes have been made?
If we get a, if we are able to move forward, we will complete all recommended practices before we open the range.
That's all the questions I have for Mr. Moser.
Any members of the board have questions for Mr. Moser?
Just one question. Do you have an engineered certified plan?
Site plan.
Do you?
Do you, me? Yes. We have a, we have a certified engineer that has done their work on the site as a site plan.
But have you turned that report in to the county per the Unified Development Ordinance?
He's looking at the, my understanding is that a site plan has been turned in, but a, a certification, I understand.
Please answer the question.
The answer is no. They do not at this time have a registered engineer who can certify compliance because they can't get in compliance until they spend the money to build it and then get it engineered. It's, it's unfortunately for them, being put in a situation where they're asked to get an engineer to certify something that doesn't exist yet.
I believe that you're asking for three different certifications.
No, I'm asking for what the UDO calls for, an engineered, a certified engineered plan per the Unified Development Ordinance. I'm asking, have you submitted that per the requirement of the Unified Development Ordinance?
And the answer to that is no.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just, one question, not, not, not of you, but maybe of Mr. Woody. I mean, because this is something that's, it's now, seems to be significant. I do know on other things that we, before we require significant expenditure for use permits, we go through some steps. Speaking to this, and just logistically, as we have written this ordinance and as it applies, speak to what seems to be the problem that's, that's been brought up about requiring something before it can feasibly or financially become viable to do. I mean, I mean, it, it seems to be what's, what, I don't know what you're atten, I think what I, I think I know what you're attempting to do.
Right on.
So, I just want to have the planning staff speak to that as to what was the county's thought during this process, relative to what appears to be the question of requiring significant expenditures with the hope of getting approval.
The certification is, is not for the construction of the range. So, nothing has to be built. The certification is limited to just the plans, and that was done intentionally so, so an applicant wouldn't go out and actually expend capital money on construction to then get a certification. They get the plan certified, have the board approval, then they can, then they can spend their capital expenses on the construction.
And to follow up, I, I can testify at this point, but to follow up, the, the issue would be that the plans themselves carry with them a significant expense. We're going to be getting into that in just a moment, that it's, it's not something that an engineer specifically can do. And I'll also call my next witness, which is Eddie Hyman from Hyman and Robey.
First, though, there's the, Mr. Mullin, do you have any questions for Mr. Moser?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, respectfully.
Mr. Moser, if you'd come back up to the podium so you can answer Mr. Mullin's questions.
Mr. Moser, you refer to this as a shooting club. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And how does one gain commission or an opportunity to shoot at your facility?
They come in and fill out an application, it's reviewed, and they pay dues to the club.
Okay, so I could come in at 12 o'clock, shoot, pay my dues, fill out an application, pay my dues, and shoot for the afternoon?
No.
I couldn't?
None of the gentleman.
They didn't advertise that way?
No, that's a perception, an opinion. It's not the way we do our business.
Okay. How do you do it?
Very professionally.
Explain that, please.
They come in, fill out an application. It's reviewed by me and the staff, and in most cases, we, we grant them a permit.
For how many times, when?
Well, it's standard a one-year dues, one-year membership.
Now, what type of firearms do you allow in your club?
Pistol and rifle.
Pistol and rifle. Does that include 22s, .300 sixes?
Yes. 300 Winmac.
300 Winmacs?
We do not allow 338 Lapua and .50 BMG, because we don't have the ballistics signature behind the range.
Okay. But .300 six would?
No, would not.
Oh, it would not. What's the highest caliber you would?
300 Winmac.
300 Winchester short mag?
No, yes, sir.
Okay. And that goes for 6,000 yards, doesn't it?
If you, if you want to calculate maximum trajectory.
Yeah, thirty inches drop.
Could be.
Now, this is a box for 22 shorts, I believe. Is that right?
Excuse me.
Mr. Moser, that, that may well have been a piece of evidence. We ask that you please not modify.
I believe that was presented to me.
No, I, I think it may have been presented to the attorney. He's going to maybe ask you questions about it.
I'm sorry.
You may go ahead, Mr. Mullin.
Is this a box of 22 shorts?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And what does the, the range on that say? For 22 shorts?
One and a half miles.
One and a half miles.
That's correct.
So, you're going to be shooting bullets in this shooting range that are a mile and a half, to have that potential?
Yeah, but they do that all over the county today.
But in your shooting range? And you're within a half a mile of the school?
But we're not firing in the direction of the school.
But you're firing in the direction of other landowners?
In a trajectory that's not aggressive.
Now, explain that trajectory that's not aggressive.
Because part of being in a safety environment is you have a baffling system, what they call is no blue sky.
Excuse, excuse me, gentlemen, but y'all need to speak into the microphone a little bit better so that.
Part of the range requirements for the NRA is what they call no blue sky, which is a baffling system that actually is outlined in your UDO. What that actually means is, in the shooting structures that we have on the range and in, in the, our use permit, is a baffle system to actually limit the trajectory of how a person could hold their rifle or a pistol. No blue sky means that there is a top that you're seeing to the target system with a back berm of 25 feet that you do not meet. You cannot see the blue sky. You're always, your, your line of sight is always within the backdrop. And that's, that's a very common practice. That's a recommendation by the NRA that we already could, uh, met and completed.
This paper you tore up, it said the Currituck Shooting Club, Inc. Is that something produced by y'all?
No, that is in the corporation.
Okay. And it says a half-day membership, four hours, $30 per person?
Actually, that's out of date. You can see that's all the way back, I don't know who made the alterations on this. That's not my, I, I don't, I believe our current applications do not have a revision date on the bottom.
But this was one of yours submitted?
Yeah, and also, we've been operating for over three years without any problems.
But you received three complaints the sheriff's department investigated, did you not?
We, we got three allegations, yes, that were appealing.
Okay. Before you made application for a shooting range?
I'm not really sure. Maybe you do.
Okay. And you're telling us, then, that you don't?
Those, that document is out of date. That's what I'm telling you.
Okay. So, it's changed from when this was?
Oh, absolutely.
And in your application, you say the range area is 1.87 acres, but I believe Mr. Woody said you needed 10 acres for a shooting range. Is that correct?
Actually, we have to be located on a, a minimum parcel of 10 acres. It doesn't mean that we have to have maximum shooting area of 10 acres.
Okay. But you just chose this 1.87 acres as the area for your shooting?
That's correct.
And you'll shoot high-fired rifles and other things? Pistols?
Pistols and rifles.
Pistols and rifles. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Mr. Schilling, have any redirect?
I do. This range, that's going to be about half a mile from the school, is it located on the same level as the school?
No, it's considerably less. In fact, it's about 25, maybe even, even farther, lower level.
It's in the bottom of an old sand pit?
That's correct.
In order for the bullet to travel towards the school, it would have to leave the gun, do a U-turn, go in the other direction, and go 25 feet up in the air, and then travel half a mile backwards.
I think your trajectory would be a lot more aggressive than that.
Another question.
If there are no further questions, any members of the board have any questions, more questions for Mr. Moser? If not, then, Mr. Schilling, you may call your next witness.
Call Eddie Hyman. Your name, sir?
Eddie Hyman.
How are you employed?
Self-employed. I'm employed through Hyman and Robey, engineers and surveyors. It's my company, as a professional surveyor.
You're a surveyor?
Yes.
There are also registered engineers with your company?
Yes, sir.
And were you contacted by the Currituck Shooting Club to provide certification from a registered engineer that they were in compliance with the UDO?
He contacted me initially to help him with some site planning, some other issues, pavement-type things, handicap access, and ultimately, the certifications on the, on the range.
And what did you do to try and complete that request?
Well, initially, we met with, we talked to, I talked to the planning staff, figured out what we were trying to do with the handicap access, uh, issues, the surface and parking area surface issues, and things of that nature, and see where he was deficient and what he needed to do. We got in touch with the building inspector. He had been working with the building inspector, got in touch with the state office, ADA, Department of Insurance about alternate handicap accesses, and we provided a sketch plan that showed a handicap parking area on top of the hill, a, a method of transportation from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill where the range is, a handicap accessible shooting bench, and a walkway to a handicap accessible porch area. And that was agreed to with the building inspector, Bill News, and, and the other, everybody that was involved in that part of the process.
Did the Currituck Shooting Club request that you certify that the design, specification, and plans for the range construction be in compliance with the standards set forth in the UDO?
That was about a month ago, yes. He was, he asked for help on all of it.
And at some point, did you determine that you were unable to provide those certifications?
Yes, we did.
And why is it, starting with the certifications regarding the NRA range sourcebook, why are you or your firm unable to provide that kind of certification?
It's beyond our expertise in what we do. We're not structural engineers or ballistic-type engineers. Our, the engineering seals come with different disciplines, electrical, structural, civil, nuclear, and we, we don't have this particular expertise within our house.
Are you aware of any engineers in Currituck County who would have the expertise that would be required to provide a certification that the shooting range facilities are compliant with the NRA range sourcebook?
I'm not aware of any.
And similarly, were you able to provide any certification that the range plans would comply with the Environmental Protection Agency's most current edition of best management practices for lead in outdoor shooting range?
We don't have those expertise either.
Do you have any engineers, registered engineers in Currituck County who would have such certifications?
Not aware of any of those either.
Now, it's my understanding that you have, your firm has, on behalf of the county, certified a range that the county uses, is that correct?
No, we didn't certify the range. We helped them with the same thing I've offered to help Mr. Moser with, the berm's, the earthwork, the state permitting for a range control, and stormwater, and things of that nature.
All of the things that you did for the county to, to assist them with building their range, you've done the same work with this range?
Yes, similar, yes. We've offered to do the same thing, yes.
And does this range comply on, in all respects, with everything that you've checked into?
The concept and the plans that we would provide would check with the, the berm's and the earthwork that's involved.
Were you able to verify that the outdoor shooting range is located on a site or parcel within an area of at least 10 acres?
Correct. This is 22 acres plus.
Were you able to confirm that no part of the shooting range is located within 200 feet of any property line?
That's correct.
Were you able to verify that no part of the shooting range is less than one-half mile from an existing residential dwelling, school, waterfowl impoundment, or Currituck Game Commission sanctioned waterfowl rest area?
That's correct.
If there were objective standards provided to your firm regarding the NRA range sourcebook by, from someone who is qualified to make those kinds of standards, would a registered engineer be able to certify compliance with those standards?
Objection. Cause for speculation on part of the witness.
He wants to lay a foundation on how he would know that.
All right, yep. Your firm has registered engineers in it?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And they include structural engineers? Okay, and they include structural engineers?
No structure.
Okay. Then I'll strike that question. Can you give me an idea of what it would cost to get a registered engineer certification that these standards have been met?
This is, like I said, it's outside of my expertise and my partners. I don't know what it would cost for that. I know my portion of what we would be doing would be around five thousand dollars to do a site plan.
Just your portion?
Just my portion, that's correct.
Just your portion without the NRA-specific standards or the EPA standards would be over five thousand dollars?
Right, to do the site work, the planning, permitting, you know.
I don't believe I have any other questions at this question.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Hyman?
I have a question, and if you did so, I apologize, but would you state your name and your qualifications?
Okay, my name is Edward T. Hyman, Jr. I'm a professional land surveyor. I'm employed by Hyman and Roby, PC, which is a company I own with my partner, Sean Roby.
Are any of the engineering, is any of the engineering work that was conducted by your firm, is, are any of those engineers here?
No. Now, the work that we've done, surveyors are licensed to do. The earthwork or the, the planning for the handicap is under the realm of a surveyor also.
And I guess one, another question I would have relative to the engineering requirements necessary to satisfy what we need to hear tonight, is that, what sort of an engineer is qualified? I mean, I know there's fourteen, sixteen different kinds of engineers, but what kind of engineer would be qualified, if you know, to satisfy the UDO requirements relative to having an engineering seal applied?
I would assume it would be a structural engineer and a ballistics-type engineer, possibly, and we're also asked to, as we get our seals, to not practice outside of our comfort zone. We practice within our expertise, and we're governed ourselves to do so.
Objection. Respectfully, I move to object to his assumptions of what he knows. I don't have any problem with what he's testifying to, but anything he assumes or believes, I object to that.
That'd be duly noted, but I think, I think he answered to what he said he understood.
Okay.
And, and this may be outside of your comfort zone, so don't feel, I mean, just tell me if it is. I'm aware of about fourteen different engineering disciplines. I'm not, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist, but I'm not familiar with a ballistic engineer. And you referred to that, that was your term. Is there such a thing, if you know, as a ballistics engineer? And if so, are you aware of where any of them would be? Or are you aware of any?
I don't know if the ballistics come under the exact criteria of an engineering discipline, and I do not know of any around in the area.
Thank you.
I have one question, speaking of in the area. It's made reference that there's no engineer in Currituck County. Are you aware of any engineering firms in Currituck County?
Actually...
Are we limited to only engineering firms in Currituck County?
Well, the...
Forgive me for not being able to cover it.
You can refer to the engineers in Currituck County, and I'm trying to figure out where they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Hayman has a question.
I'm sorry, yeah, I had a question. I'm not sure if it's directed at Mr. Hyman or not, but when we talked about ballistics and you just thought came, I wanted some clarification on the surrounding areas and the area that we're talking about. I know we're talking about ballistics, high-powered rifles and whatnot. Is there, I mean, is there hunting lands in that vicinity that's allowed for high-powered rifle hunting that's in these proximities? I was just curious. That's close to the shooting range. They're, okay.
They're all over the place.
Okay.
Any other questions by commissioners for Mr. Hyman? Mr. Hyman? If not, Mr. Moser, do you have any questions for Mr. Hyman?
Not anymore, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of calls. How many engineers in Camden County who would meet the standards to certify what's required by the UDO?
Like I said, I do not know of any in the area.
By the area, I mean, anyone in?
This northeastern area, but I have not pursued any either, but I don't, I'm not aware of any.
How long have you been running a engineering and surveying firm in Camden?
I've been licensed since nineteen eighty. I've been Camden since two thousand and one, fifteen years.
Do you know most of the engineers in the area?
We work with a lot of them, yes.
You're not aware of anyone in the area, and by that you mean going down to Derrick County as far as it goes?
I know some structural that we do team up with. I know some electrical that we team up with. We partner in when projects, when they're outside of our expertise, we get other people in to help us with the design, we add their seal and their titlehead to the plats. And we could do that in this case, but we don't, we haven't located one yet.
Have you ever located anybody who would be able to certify compliance with the NRA standard?
We have not. We've asked Mr. Moser to help us try to find one, and he's apparently been working with the NRA to do so.
And you notified Mr. Moser that you didn't have these qualifications last Monday, is that correct?
We met on last Monday. He was out of town for a week before that, and we had been in touch, but we met last Monday.
That was the first time it was brought up that you didn't have the qualifications to meet that part of the UDO, is that correct?
We had been discussing it back and forth, but I, we let him know that that was not going to be a possibility.
That's all the questions.
Let me ask one question while I...
Mr. Moser, please come up to the microphone.
Did Mr. Moser request you to see if you could find a ballistic engineer or somebody that could comply with the ordinance?
He asked me to help me with this process, and as I got into it, he did not ask me that.
To go find it. When you told him you lacked the ability, and that was about two weeks ago, y'all talked before you met and said you just couldn't do what he wanted?
It was a week ago when I, he sat down in my office and we went over it, and we just couldn't fulfill the need.
Did he at that time employ you to go find somebody to fulfill the requirements of the ordinance?
No, he, we talked about it. We gave him a phone number, a reference of somebody that might could help him.
And you've heard nothing from him as of this day?
I think he, I think he did make a phone call.
But you didn't, and he didn't employ you to see if you could, if I came in with a subdivision map and I had to get drainage and things like that, you'd tell me who could go, who I'd have to go to to do this? Probably Mr. Roby in your outfit, but that's what I do.
That's what we do.
That's right, and of course, when you were just a surveyor, you'd have to get somebody with that qualification in to assist you with just your surveys.
For the water lines and things like that.
Right, right, but he didn't employ you to find somebody to fulfill the requirements of the ordinance?
He implied that he was having to take a care of the NRA, and, and we were, and we were working with him, and I still, you know, trying to help him to get this across the finish line.
But it's not there?
No, not yet, but we're close.
Mr. Chairman?
And just as a point of clarity, a engineer's stamp is state-specific, correct?
Correct.
So, just because we're just south of Hampton Roads doesn't mean that we can rely on a structural engineer in Chesapeake, Virginia to help support this, correct?
If he's licensed, he's got to be licensed, no matter where he lives, yes.
But he's got to be licensed in the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one simple question. I mean, are we sure that such a discipline exists as a ballistic engineer? I mean, we're talking all about engineers and whether they're here, there, wherever. Do we know that there's such a discipline out there that would certify? I mean, I don't know, I'm asking, I mean, we're getting wrapped around the wheel here.
I tried to do that kind of artfully when I said I knew about four, at least fourteen different disciplines, but I was not aware.
Mr. Woody, I guess I'll ask you that, I mean, as we put this as part of the requirements of the ordinance, I mean, did we ensure that there was such a animal out there?
The certification is not for range operation. Certification's for range construction. So, I guess I'm not sure exactly what a ballistic engineer would do in terms of range construction.
Well, I'm totally confused.
We're talking about two different issues.
I understand.
The UDO requires a certification for construction, just like if it's a, it's a residential subdivision?
I understand that.
Or a commercial subdivision. It does not require one thing of construction to be done until it's approved.
Got it.
So, he is asked, the UDO is asking for a certification from an engineer that his plan meets the requirements, not how it's going to be operated. That's a, that's an entirely different issue. Am I correct, Mr. Woody?
Yes, that's correct. There's, there's construction standards outlined in the UDO and in the NRA Sourcebook as well.
So, so a structural engineer certainly could probably provide that certification, is that what I'm hearing?
I would think so.
So, how are we getting tied up in ballistics?
I'm not sure.
We don't have a structural engineer.
Okay.
I, I think, if I could, just to try to make this as clear as muddy water, I guess, I think the reason that ballistics engineer, I think you're the one that used that term, and I was just probing that to ascertain if there was anything, if there was any such thing as a ballistics engineer. I wasn't trying to, in fact, I think I was trying to establish that, to my knowledge, there was no such thing as a ballistics engineer. So, what we're doing here, folks, is we're creating a record. So, everything we do here is going to be reviewed later. So, you know, it's incumbent upon us to try, setting, to clarify things as much as we can, because this will be reviewed later, I suspect, and I'm just trying to get in the evidence. We're talking, suddenly, it was interjected, this so-called ballistics engineer, and that was part and part in the context of you saying you did not have the expertise in your firm necessary to do this. I was probing that to determine what sort of expertise. Now, we're, we're kind of sort of talking about a structural engineer, and your firm, I take it, let me verify that, is not cert, you do not have a certi, or certified structural engineer?
We do not do structural.
You do not, and are you aware of any structural engineers? You alluded to the fact that you knew some, where, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you know them, where are they?
Well, I know, one is in Derrick County, one that we use and refer work to on occasion is in Derrick County.
I would say that is in the area, at least, subjectively, we would agree that it's in the area.
Yeah, I'll include that.
So, I, I'm just trying to clarify this question about ballistics engineer, that's all. I, I don't think there was one exists, but I could, I could stand to be corrected.
Further questions for Mr. Hyman, and Mr. Shilling, you may call your next witness.
Don't want to mispronounce his name, so I'm going to look at his card. Called Dick Petticord, Dr. Dick Petticord? I'm going to ask you to say it again so that, in case I butchered it too badly.
My name is Dick Petticord.
And you are a PhD?
Yes.
What's your PhD in?
Environmental science.
All right, and if you would, you're familiar with the documents that are mentioned in the UDO, the best management practices for lead at outdoor shooting ranges?
Yes.
And how is it you're familiar with that?
When that was developed, I was part of the few people that were asked to review and comment on the draft.
Hang on, I don't think they can all hear you, so I'm more than, more than they hear you than me.
When EPA developed that document, I was asked to review and comment on the draft. I'm acknowledged in the acknowledgements on the, on the first page and was given their environmental quality award for my contributions to the document.
Have you been involved in the development and construction of any shooting ranges in the past?
Yes.
How many?
I have developed environmental stewardship plans consistent with that EPA guidance for about a hundred and fifty ranges across the country.
And have you had an opportunity, maybe I got, when were you contacted by the Currituck Shooting Club about the range that they're building here in Currituck County?
This past Friday afternoon.
And what is it you've been asked to do on behalf of the Currituck Shooting Club?
Mr. Shilling, if we can stop for a moment. There's a gentleman filming from the back, which is certainly appropriate and allowed under the open meetings law, however, your light is, is shining in the face of some of the county commissioners, making it difficult for them to concentrate. So, if you'd like to relocate to another part of the room, you're more than welcome to film. All right, sorry, Mr. Shilling, go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to back up a little bit. If you could, tell me a little bit more about your qualifications and background with regard to your doctorate and where you got it, and your knowledge of the EPA's best management practices.
The PhD is from the University of Virginia. I became involved with managing lead at outdoor shooting ranges in nineteen eighty-six. Remington, it was really the first large environmental lawsuit on that issue. I was involved on behalf of Remington Arms at Lordship Gun Club up in Stratford, Connecticut. That introduced me to the subject, and since nineteen eighty-six, that has been part of my business. I established my own firm in nineteen ninety-seven, and since about two thousand, that has been exclusively my business. I participated in developing the EPA guidance. The National Shooting Sports Foundation has a document called Environmental Aspects of Construction and Management of Outdoor Shooting Ranges, which I wrote for them. I am one of their, let's see, they call us the, the Range Service Specialists, I believe, the National Shooting Sports Range Service Specialist Team. I've been speaking on managing lead at outdoor shooting ranges at the NRA Range Development and Operations Conferences, two to four times a year for the past fifteen years. I have worked with developing environmental stewardship plans, that's one of the major primary activities that I do. I've developed, as I say, perhaps a hundred and fifty stewardship plans for ranges around the country, some of them ranges that have been in operation for many years, but a good number of them ranges that are still in the design, design stage, and I've worked with range designers such that their designs incorporate the, the features necessary for implementation of the EPA guidance.
The UDO requires that a registered engineer certify that the design, specification, and plans for the construction are in compliance with the EPA best management practices. Has it been your practice or has been your experience that registered engineers are the people who provide that sort of certification?
The engineers typically will certify. However, the, the EPA guidance on environmental aspects of managing a shooting range, managing lead at a shooting range, really are not engineering kinds of things. They are environmental science kinds of things. It's contrasted with, with structural engineering kinds of things. I typically work with the engineers and develop an environmental stewardship plan, which is a management plan. It includes design features, because you've got to have it designed right if you're going to manage it correctly. I work with the engineers and develop that plan, and they do their design consistent with the design, with the aspects of that environmental stewardship plan that require design and construction, and then they certify that the, that the final design is, in fact, consistent with the EPA guidance.
So, if I understand correctly, then, a person who's wanting to build this shooting range in compliance with the UDO would first contact someone like you, who would come up with a plan, and then after the plans are drawn, then the engineer would certify that the drawings were done in consistent with the plan you came up with? Is that correct?
I'm going to say yes, and then I'm going to elaborate. The item, item five E that speaks about the EPA guidance, I would be hired to develop an environmental stewardship plan consistent with that guidance, with this EPA guidance. That plan will include several things, two types of things relevant here tonight. One is that it will include some, we need designs that accomplish the following things. I don't get into the numbers of how big it must be, or how heavy it must be, or whatever, but we need designs that will accomplish some of the, some specific things that have environmental implications. And then we also get into some management things that are really not engineering design issues at all. I will work with the engineer such that the structural design they do provides for, for instance, water management, consistent with environmental issues related to water quality. They will do that design consistent with the needs of the environmental stewardship plan that I have developed. So, I will be hired to work with the engineer in the design process.
So, without someone with your expertise, would a structural engineer or any kind of engineer be qualified to show compliance with? of engineer be qualified to show compliance with 5E of the UDO?
Probably not, simply because shooting ranges and that EPA guidance are such a narrow niche. It would be hard to find, if you picked 100 engineering firms out of the Yellow Pages, that shows how old I am, off the internet, whatever, if you picked 100 engineering firms, you might find two of them that have designed a range. It's just simply a very narrow niche that they've never, that most engineering firms have never needed to know anything about, and therefore don't. I am, I am one of a few frogs in a small pond that deals with environmental management issues at outdoor shooting ranges. So I know it. Most engineering firms have no need to know it, and therefore don't.
What kind of engineer is this that we're looking for? Not a ballistics engineer, I think.
In my experience, this is often done by a civil engineer. My son is an aerospace engineer and deals with pretty sophisticated, exotic, esoteric things that I can't comprehend. The engineering that goes on at a shooting range is not that kind of, if you will, sophistication in engineering. It's simply that the features that must be addressed are very specific to shooting ranges. It's not that the engineering is exotic engineering. It's just that the needs are very specific to shooting ranges, and you must be familiar with them to know what they are to design for them. It's not that the designs are complicated.
To hire someone of your caliber to come up with these plans that would then later be certified by an engineer, can you give the board an idea of what you would cost to develop such plans?
Well, in, in some ways, we're getting ahead of ourselves. Mr. Mosier has contracted with me to develop an environmental stewardship plan for the Currituck Shooting Club. The first step in that process will be to determine what the cost for it will be, and I've not yet done that. So understand that I'm not providing a bid to him or to yourselves. But on the order of, well, let me do it this way. When I speak at the NRA Range Development and Operations Conferences, this question always comes up, what does it cost to develop an environmental stewardship plan? And the answer is, there's a certain minimum level of effort that's required to do a credible plan. And I tell people, expect to spend not less than $5,000, but probably not more than about eight or nine, depending on the complexity of the range and the site and the situation. But that's, that's the general range.
And that would be your cost, somewhere in the range of five to $9,000, separate apart then from the cost of getting the engineer to certify your work?
That is my cost to do the design, has nothing to do with the certification, and has nothing to do with the construction to meet that design.
But you would be able to come up with a design that would meet the criteria set forth in 5E of the UDO, that it would be designed to contain the bullets shot, and to the degree as specified by the EPA's most current edition of best management practices for lead at outdoor shooting ranges?
Yes.
And you have visited the site here in Currituck?
Yes, yes.
Is it a site that is feasible for use as a shooting range?
Entirely. It appears to me to be a very satisfactory site from an environmental management perspective.
And again, you've been involved in the development of how many shooting ranges?
Roughly 150.
And from a safety standpoint, do you have any opinion on that?
That is not my area of expertise. I...
Well, no answer.
Any commissioners have any questions for this witness?
I do. Of those 150 ranges that you've worked with, have you ever seen them get approval before the plans were submitted?
Yes, I have.
Could you be a little more specific?
Well, many times I am not involved with this aspect of the process. This is handled, and I am involved to the side. So I, I would not pretend that I've been involved in, in this role at this stage of anywhere approaching 150. The ones that I have been involved with, I have found that there are differences in procedures in different states and counties and different customs in terms of this, this issue that we raised of, how, how far do you have to stick your neck out before you can get approval, that, that sort of thing? And there seems to be differences in different places. So it is my experience that, in, in several of the situations in which I have been involved at this stage, there has been an iterative process. You'll get an approval to go so far, and you go that far, and then there's another set of criteria to be met, and you're, you're, you have some assurance as you go forward that you, that it's worth risking the money to take the next step. That's not a specific answer to your question, and I apologize for not being terribly quantitative.
Well, we're, we're at the point tonight, we're being requested for a final approval, not a step-by-step approval. Have you ever participated in a final approval before a plan was submitted? Again, we're not going step by step and then moving on. This is a request for a final permit tonight. It's, it's, of the ones you participated in, it's a yes or no question. Have you ever seen a final approval given before the plans were submitted?
I can't recall one way or the other. I don't mean to be evasive, I simply do not recall what the answer to that question is. There...
If you can't recall, that's sufficient.
No, I'm sorry. I, I do, I do not know.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
I had a question. With all the shooting ranges you've designed, how many of those have involved a pit design like this? And if so, does this area show in your designs a better facility or place to do one in a pit versus non-pit application? Or, I don't know if I made myself clear on that or not.
I, I think I can speak to that. Most ranges are not designed in pits. If you will, a pit is constructed around the range by virtue of a backstop and sideburns. So in a sense, most ranges are, in their ultimate design, are pits because, excuse me, backstops and sideburns are built around them. In this case, and there are other places around the country where ranges have been built in sand and gravel excavation pits. And that can be very satisfactory. In this case, I think it is particularly satisfactory, because what we're seeing is, it's deep enough that the sides, sideburns and backstop, if you will, are in excess of the NRA minimum specifications in the range source book. But also because we are in a situation where there are no surface water drainages from the range into streams. Sorry, I tend to talk with my hands. The, the pit is, in fact, water runs into rather than out of the area of the lead. Because it is so low, water is seeping into that pit and rising rather than going down. So that should tend to minimize any potential movement of lead in water out of the pit. The water management is in the pit.
He can't speculate as to hydrological factors that he knows nothing about. Speculation.
He's wanting to testify that he has a PhD in this area, so I think he does know something about it.
Go ahead and continue with your testimony.
The water management, as I understand it, I have not examined it, but as I am told, the water management is to a low spot in the pit and then pumped out. And that entire pathway is water that is rising from the surrounding soil and up, rather than going down into the ground. And that sump from which the water is pumped provides a settling basin for any microparticulate anything to settle out and not be pumped out. There should be no lead escaping this, the lead escaping this range should be absolutely minimal compared to most ranges built on the surface of the ground. I find this particular pit design attractive from an environmental perspective.
Any further questions for any commissioners?
One last question. Have you been contacted by an engineer to help present and put together the report as required?
No, I haven't.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullin, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Schilling?
We're going to take a five-minute break. Colin, your next witness?
Actually, before I make a call my witness, ask the board to consider a motion. When we came here tonight, obviously, we knew we didn't have the engineered certifications the statute requires. We discovered, and by we, of course, I mean the Currituck Shooting Club, discovered about a week ago that the engineer that we retain and have been working with for months did not have the qualifications necessary to provide the certifications that we hoped we would have for you at the meeting tonight. We came here after I reviewed the UDO and looked at subsection 2.311 that talks about conditions of approval. It says, "Conditions of approval shall be limited to those deemed necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards for the particular type of application." Seemed to me that fit pretty neatly with what we were talking about here. So it was my intention to come to you tonight and ask for the use permit to be approved subject to conditions of approval, namely that we get the requirements of subsection 5C and 5E, the NRA and EPA standards met, and have an engineer certify those. I would, at this time, I am sensing that that is not something that is favorably viewed, and if so, I would ask the board to consider a motion for a recess to enable us to get those engineering standards met. We thought we were on track to do so. It was only a week ago that the engineer that had been recommended to us by county staff to provide those engineering certifications advised us that they would not be able to provide those certifications. I will point out that the Currituck County Shooting Club is going to have to incur significant expense to the tune of probably $10,000 to $15,000 in order to get the plans and the designs and the applications made. But if the board is not inclined to consider conditions of approval for our use permit, I would ask you to consider a motion for a recess to get us time to get those engineering certifications together.
Mr. Schilling, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you talk with staff before we had our meeting tonight? And did they inform you that you did not have your, that you were required to have an engineered certification?
Absolutely, yes. I spoke with, actually with the county attorney, and I was aware.
You chose to come anyway, come anyways, knowing you didn't have it?
As I read the conditions of approval, the subsection that I've just cited in the UDO, it appeared to me that one option the board would have would be to grant us a use permit subject to conditions of approval that would be limited to those deemed necessary to ensure compliance with the review standards. If that was not an option, and the only two options for the board were approval or denial, I would have asked for the matter to be continued.
What did our staff tell you?
That one of the options would be for the court, for the board to grant us a use permit with conditions of approval.
Really? Our staff told you that?
That was in conversations that I've had with the county attorney and with other attorneys who are, and, and, he didn't specify that that would be...
I'm sorry, I did not say that. I, I said that definitively, there would be the necessity of having a registered engineer certify the plans and specifications were approved by that engineer, and I suggested that they might want to consider a deferral from this meeting in order to get themselves prepared for hearing. I did say that a deferral would be required to be approved by the board at the meeting, so you all would have, this board would have had to have taken action tonight to defer it prior to the hearing beginning.
But that was to do a deferral, not that we could do an alternate approval?
That's correct. I never, I never mentioned that.
That is correct, and I'm thinking it through, and there was another attorney I've spoken with who does a fair amount of work in this area, who had suggested to me that that was an option for the board. And again, as I read this subsection of the UDO, it did appear that it would be an option for the board. And that's why I began my presentation tonight, saying that we knew that we would only be subject for approval if, and that we were only asking for a use permit with conditions of approval, because we knew we didn't have those. So it's not by any means our intention to waste anyone's time. We thought that the board might consider, given the expense that the club will incur in order to get those certified plans from the engineer, that you might give at least a use permit with, subject to those conditions, so that they would not incur $10,000 to $15,000 worth of expense, on the hope that they might be approved later on the other issues that appear, that staff does approve the application on. So that was our basis for going forward. At this point, it seems pretty clear to me that you're not inclined to do that. If that's the case, we would ask you to grant a motion for a recess to give us a time to get those engineering plans put together.
I'll just make one point for the record. We have people appear here regularly that incur $10,000 to $15,000 to get before the board, because that's the cost of getting your engineering done before you come to the board commissioners seeking approvals.
And I would...
So you, I just want to clarify, your applicant's not being treated any different than anyone else?
I appreciate that. I would point out that my applicant spent about $6,000 so far with an engineer that they thought would have the qualifications to present this to the board, and only discovered this past Monday that they did not. And they were, it was the engineer that was recommended to us by the staff.
All right, I have nothing else. I think Mr. Mullin would like to have a response.
Respectfully, I got to tell you, I've sat with commissioners for 25 or 30 years in Paxton and Camden. You each one deserve the full appreciation and respect of everybody here. It's a tough job. In this instance, respectfully, I would ask you to deny it. If this request to continue it had been made before we wasted an hour and a half, I'd feel differently about it. But in this instance, they carried it on for an hour and a half, knowing they didn't have everything, so respectfully, I would ask you to deny their request and let them wait and come back appropriately at a future time and make another application. But to deny this one here tonight, we wasted an hour and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just the board wanting to continue with the special use permit. Do you want to defer, or do you wish to deny? You've got three choices.
Mr. McCree, if the decision is to defer it, every witness that's here tonight should continue to attend the next, when we hear this? Or would it be beneficial for the applicant to withdraw the application?
Well, obviously, if you, if you recess or continue, at this point, you would pick up where this hearing left off, so anyone who had not yet testified and intended to present any evidence to you would need to return if they wanted to be heard or their evidence considered.
Good question. If, if this does get denied, does, can the applicant then, you said the applicant can refile again and go through the whole process again? Is that correct?
Well, I believe the ordinance has some limitation.
Yeah, if, if, if the application is denied, and they are prohibited from refiling the same application for a period of one year unless the board grants a waiver, and the conditions under which you can grant a waiver for a faster additional review is substantial damages, or substantial change in circumstances relevant to the issues or facts presented, newer additional information that is available that was not available at the time of review, material, application proposed to be submitted is materially different from the first application, or the final decision was based on a material mistake of fact. So, but generally, the timeline for reapplying is one year, unless one of those conditions exists. And there's more, I didn't read them all and verbatim, but there's more to it than that.
I don't know, just a general comment. It's, it's hard to dis, I think, it's hard to dismiss with prejudice something...
It's, it's hard to dis, I think, it's hard to dismiss with prejudice something that can be cured, it appears, with subsequent or additional, additional work. In other words, it's almost like using a procedure to stop something that otherwise could be, be cured. Now, on the other side, the requirements for this ordinance, it's my understanding, were, were advertised, were discussed, were made known to, I think, both sides. So this, this is kind of a difficult question here, because there's things on both sides. You dismiss with prejudice, I say that because you, there could be a year or whatever. That would have financial, potential financial impact on the applicant's livelihood or potential livelihood, as well as the people in Currituck who utilize that, that facility. And I'll just throw this in for whatever it's worth. It's not relevant necessarily to this matter, but I will throw it in that when we pass this ordinance some months back, by the nature of the requirements that this board imposed when they, they created this ordinance, we in essence, this board redlined 93% of Currituck County from any consideration for a public outdoor range. It geographically kind of shoehorns it in to the upper part of the county, because the lower part of the county cannot geographically meet the one-half mile requirement that we imposed, and that's why I say 93%. That doesn't mean the other 7% are automatically going to get it, because they have to go through this process. So I throw that out just for whatever value is, is, is there. I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of time and effort expended on, on both sides to get this here. I don't know if it might not be incumbent upon us. I, I don't know. I throw that out just for, for, for thought.
Mr. Chairman, the, the other issue I think that we're, we're facing here is, this is the first time that we've taken this change to the UDO out for a drive, and I think, you know, as an engineer, I, I clearly understand that the issues with disciplines associated with engineering that I'm not sure the layperson's necessarily going to know. So with that said, you know, to have all these people come out and show up and, and try to get resolution on this case, one way or the other, the flip side is, you know, we have, we as a county have an element of responsibility in here as well as making sure that, that we clearly communicated what, I mean, I know we require the engineering, certainly, but to what degree that needs to be done, I think this board learned a lesson tonight as well as to who and who can't sign off on that. And with that said, I am willing to make a motion.
Well, I'm willing to make a comment. This is not somebody building a shed in their backyard. You're building a shooting range, and to ask us to approve it on a promise that you're going to do something, you're going to have live ammunition shooting. You're going to have people out there, you're going to have people in the proximity. This isn't like somebody coming forward to, to say, "We're going to build a house and, and, oh, we're going to have to make a modification to add an extra foot to the driveway." I'm talking about high-powered rifles and guns in this area. Now, I have guns, I shoot them before anybody starts saying he's anti-Second Amendment. I've got guns, shoot them, cold dead hands, I know all that. I'm one of them. But for us to even consider to give approval of something without every I being dotted and every T being crossed is the height of us being not responsible to the general public to, 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 to do that consideration. Now, whether they meet the, the ordinance or not, that's to be seen, there'll be more evidence or whatever, but this isn't something you just take lightly and say, "Well, he's going to get a, a guy to, to meet with the EPA guy, and they're going to get the stuff, and then we'll present it after we get our permit." It does, that's not how it's going to work.
I, I think the question before us is whether or not we would entertain a request from the attorney to allow a recess or whatever, not necessarily, I, I didn't, I didn't understand your motion to be a motion to, a motion to approve.
I interrupted him.
Okay. I did not take this as a motion.
It's a valid comment. I apologize. But I completely concur exactly with what you said, but what I, what I was attempting to convey is that, you know, we learned that there is an extra layer of engineering requirements that, that this applicant needs to meet, clearly before I would suggest that this board would approve those actions.
All right. So... So what was your motion?
My motion is that we defer the, the remainder of the hearing on this issue until the applicant meets that basic requirement to ensure the facility will be designed or built in a safe manner.
I'll second her motion.
I have a motion to defer, which would be the same as recess.
The same as recess, same as continuance.
Sorry.
That's all right.
And it would be heard again in 90 days? Is that what was asked?
That's what we asked for, yes. Yes, in 90 days.
Okay, that's your motion, and you seconded it?
I did.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries? Next agenda item. We're going to get a chance for people to leave.
Me neither.
I was going to defend myself.
I want to make sure you, I want to make sure you pray, baby. Play into the...
Within your rights and fulfillment.
Our next agenda item is Monterey Shores, Phase 3, Corolla Bay, Section 2. Mr. Woody, I will, let me, let me say this for the general public. I can, uh, spoke with the county attorney previously. This property is currently owned by a affiliate of Town Bank. I am, I work for an affiliate of Town Bank. I do not work for Town Bank proper, so I asked Mr. McCree if I had a conflict of interest, and I will let him speak to that.
Unlike some states, Mr. Chairman, North Carolina requires a county commissioner to vote, requires you to vote on every matter that comes before you, unless it is an issue that is dealing with your personal financial interest or your character. In this instance, it's my opinion that this does not involve your personal financial interests nor your character, and thus you are compelled by state law to vote and participate fully in this matter.
Thank you. What I did go to the attorney, and I wanted to fully disclose, so, Mr. Woody?
I have a one question. Can I just follow up?
I'm going to count them.
I have to do business.
Okay, Mr. Woody. Is this in fact a special use permit?
It is.
So we need anyone that is going to speak to this issue in favor or in opposition to please come forward and put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a subdivision request in the Corolla area. You can see on the aerial photograph, this is located on the west side of NC 12 bordering the Currituck Sound. It's in the Monterey Shores planned unit development. Property's currently zoned, single-family, outer banks, is in a, what's called a PUD overlay, which is the zoning designation for our, our PUDs on the beach. Land use plan designates this area as full service, which is an area intended for growth and development. This, this is section two of a subdivision that, that's really initially started many years ago. When section one initiated, it was, it was probably 2004, '05, '06, it took a number of years. There were, there were wastewater issues in Monterey Shores, there was a lot of complicated reasons why this subdivision took time to come to record. Section one has been platted, it's, it's built, the subdivision infrastructure's built, there's a number of houses in there. Across the street, you have the Villas at Corolla Bay Development, which was a development of patio homes that are related to this development. So what you have tonight is, the owner of the property has decided to move forward and complete the single-family lots on the west side of NC 12. So this is section two of the Corolla Bay subdivision. Section two is 36 residential lots. It's a density of about 2.6 units per acre in this particular tract of land. For the actual Monterey Shores PUD, the overall density's 2.05 units per acre. This subdivision is serviced by Southern County Water, Southern Outer Banks Water System, and Carolina Water Service provides the central sewer for this property. What this does is this preliminary plat would allow the, would allow the applicant to move forward and submit construction drawings, the engineer drawings, to then move forward and begin constructing the rest of the subdivision. I think the stormwater infrastructure and some of the drainage infrastructure is already in place, as it was done as part of section one, so what you really primarily will see with this is, is the extension of the, of the road, the street infrastructure, and then the, the creation and plating of the lots. One thing I do want to note for your consideration, which really is probably more of an NCDOT issue, but nonetheless, this, this, this tract of land, section two, is in the proposed terminus of the Mid-Currituck Bridge, Preferred Alternative MCB4. Right-of-way acquisition has not occurred for that yet by NCDOT, but nonetheless, this is located in that terminus area, and staff did send information on this subdivision and a copy of, of the plan to the NCDOT for their information. This is a use permit, so as we discussed in the previous case, you have to make certain findings based on criteria required in the ordinance. Staff has provided preliminary staff findings for consideration, based on application of the UDO and the land use plan and the information provided by the applicant. Staff's opinion is that these findings can be met. The technical review committee reviewed this request. This preliminary plat and does recommend approval, subject to two plan corrections. One, that all stormwater utility infrastructure located on individual lots be included in the easement, and that the NCD or stormwater permits will be updated and modified to provide the actual lot sizes and coverage allocations for each lot prior to recording the plat. The planning board heard this preliminary plat as well, and also recommended approval on unanimous vote. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Mr. Woody, the matter before us now is, is part of this area that we are considering tonight located in the terminus of the proposed Mid-County Bridge?
It, it is. That's correct.
And by approving this, what if, what potential affect would that have on, if you can speak to it, on, on the Mid-County Bridge project in the future, if we approve this and there's subsequent development or houses built on it, as opposed to where we are now?
Probably the principal impact of this moving forward would be that the NCDOT, once they initiated right-of-way acquisition, would certainly have additional costs, because instead of acquiring raw acreage, they would be acquiring platted lots.
Now, that cost, how, how, what would be part and parcel of that cost? What, what are some things would, well, what would be part and parcel of additional cost?
Well, principally, probably the, the cost of the improved land, the infrastructure, the water, sewer, road.
What about houses? If houses were built on it?
If there were structures built, the DOT would have to condemn the structures.
So DOT's, DOT would have to condemn structures that are relatively, well, a newer-built house in order to utilize that property?
Yes, they would. That's correct.
All right, now, all that being said, did staff duly notify the state DOT of this proposed hearing coming before us or this matter?
We did. The planning staff sent information, including a set of the plans, to the, to senior representatives of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and my understanding is that the county manager has also had discussions with officials from DOT about this proposal.
That is correct.
Would it be, would I be safe in assuming that they have not commented one way or the other on this?
I would say that they're aware of the approval that's going forward, or the proposed project that's going forward.
All right, maybe a better question would be, have they voiced any objection to it?
They, they have not, the planning staff.
They have not voiced objections to me.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Woody, if you would, based on the map, and I understand the term, is, do we have a rough, is it going right down the middle? Is it going to one side? Is it going?
I think it, it basically, if I remember correctly, I think it, I believe it lines up with North Harbor. I think there's supposed to be a roundabout there, so...
It's, it's to the southern portion of the parcel.
Let's see.
To the southern, okay.
The cul-de-sac would be in this thing.
Isn't it like?
I'm Carlos Gomez, coastal engineer. It, it actually lines up with the cul-de-sac.
Carlos? Let me open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public hearing is open, and you can come and address that, that question.
It's, it's very close, yes. It comes right through there, but the cul-de-sac goes to the side, and then it goes to where the entrance for the, the street across, the 19 lots that are already plotted. They're planning to put a roundabout at that point.
The public hearing is o, yes?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir?
From Mr. Woody, couple problems. Is there anything that will be placed in the, on flats or whatever that shows that these lots are located in the terminus areas, so unsuspecting purchasers coming in to buy a piece of property will at least know that they are in an area that is likely to be condemned in the future and taken from them?
There's, there's not a specific UDO requirement, but that would be something the board could add as a condition of approval, and, and I think would be appropriate.
Second, has the, well, I'll talk to them, they'll come up.
All right, anything else? We have Louis Russos signed up, or any of the people that were sworn in, you're welcome to come speak.
I'm Louis Russos with Northeastern North Carolina Properties, which is a, a single-purpose entity for this development. First, I, I guess to address one question is, I do believe realtors have to disclose that there's a potential bridge landing site next door. Additionally, the, one purpose for us to... Additionally, the one purpose for us to move forward with this are that lots 63 through approximately 72, those are not impacted by the bridge landing site, to my understanding. And we cannot, they're actually part of Phase 2, so we have to move forward to start working on those. There's a lot of lots to sell in Phase 1 and that small portion of Phase 2, and we don't have a short-term plan to necessarily bring in the road and the utilities as part of Phase 2. But there are lots in Phase 2 that have utilities and the roadway there. Thank you.
Those lots are ready to go. And you see them there on the east side?
Exactly.
Those lots.
Sir, we have a couple of questions for.
Yes, sir.
As you, your company had any direct conversations with DOT concerning this and concerning the terminus and seeing if something could get worked out? I mean, to me, this just looks like a mess. And I understand your issues about lots 63 through 72. I don't have any problem approving those, however, but you're looking at the whole bigger picture, and I'm just, I'm asking, have you had any conversations with DOT?
I haven't personally, but I believe my boss, Herb Hamlet, has. And we've owned this property for some time, and, you know, we haven't had a offer or anything like that. So, that's the extent of it. Nothing that I've heard.
So, you're testifying here that there has been conversations with DOT, with your boss?
You know, I can't speak for him, but, you know, I do believe that DOT is aware of the new owners of the property, and from my understanding, we haven't received any offer in reference to that section of the property.
Another gentleman standing.
I'm not sworn in, but I could add to that question.
Well, you can't speak unless you're sworn, but I'm willing to come swear you in real quick, because this is an important issue.
I don't do this very often, so.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Rafael Vinyaric. I'm also an employee of the affiliate. I was actually at the meeting with the DOT, with Herbert Hamlet, who is Louis's boss and who was mine in the past. We have had discussions regarding the acquisition of the right-of-way. Met in at their headquarters with the staff that included 20 people or so, multiple experts. Obviously, we're here today in front of you to seek this approval of this plat, because we have not received a concrete offer to sell the property in its entirety of its portion. It is true that we could do the second phase in pieces. Unfortunately, it doesn't serve us very well to do that in pieces. There is a significant impact to our ability to sell the property as it is currently because of the stigma of the potential bridge coming in, significant impact to the value of the lots and adjoining properties even across the street. As Louis referred to it as in the past, or just a couple minutes ago, the realtors have disclosed and provided adequate disclosures to all buyers across the street that the bridge is coming, and they are required to sign off on that, just so that there is no issue in the future and any claims brought against us as the new owners of the property for devaluation that might result of the bridge coming. We want to record the entire site, so we can move forward with, at some point, like Louis said earlier, maybe not as soon as possible, but at some point, to finish all the stormwater improvements, all the road improvements, and any other investments that we may have to finish off the entire Phase 2, so all those lots could be built upon. As this is an affiliate of the bank, we want to make sure that this property holds its value, and hopefully, this doesn't continue to go down further in value. I don't know. There's no time, so I'm glad. So, really, it allows us to make the property sellable either in pieces or a lot of time as we build our homes, and there's no question in mind as to what will happen to it. Now, should there be any acquisition of right-of-way in the future? You know, we obviously would, I personally would love to see the bridge come, as I love the Outer Banks, but the affiliate of the bank obviously needs to recover its investment that it made through the loan years ago.
I understand, but from our perspective, I mean, you know, the bridge has been a 25-year battle, and I certainly am not going to just arbitrarily do something that DOT officials will come back and say, oh, it must not be too important to you folks, because you allowed this to happen. But I understand your comments as well, so I wish I'd have understood the full ramifications just a little earlier than what I did, because it brings a lot of questions to mind I just don't have answers to tonight.
Certainly. Just to let you know, these conversations have been going on for, with the DOT over a year ago, so there's been ample amount of time for even a bigger organization as NC DOT to make a decision. Obviously, the project scoring system that have been implemented here, you know, this year, has changed how these projects are ordered and what's their significance. The most recent valuation of the project obviously put it up higher. Unfortunately, we are holding a piece of property in our portfolio that we need to dispose of. If the DOT or anybody else would like to purchase it, we obviously would want to ascertain it. As it is today, no buyers have come forward, so we have to move on with another plan.
Would you be willing to give us a two-week continuance and to give us the opportunity to tell DOT, if you're interested, you better do something now? If not, we're going to approve this deal?
Let me just repeat that. Are you saying that you're issuing us conditional approval based on the turnaround time if they don't, if the NC DOT?
I'm saying, continue this for two weeks. You guys come back in two weeks, and if not had any response from DOT, then we'll make a motion and be done with it.
No decision will be made tonight in two weeks.
What response from the NC DOT? Would we need to, any response or a yes response?
I'm looking forward to make a decision what they're going to do.
So, I guess you have to see.
I mean, I don't know. Speak up, rest of you.
Oh, no. Oh, no, no. I concur. I think what he's asking is for us, not you to reach out, but for us, us as an entity, the county, to reach out to DOT and ascertain what, if any, interest they have, and if they're fully aware of the implications involved with granting this going forward. Now, that's what he was asking. Now, I would just go one further. You said you've had conversations with 20 or more people at DOT, and I guess there've been more than one. I'm curious, what, if anything, have they said relative to your proposal to go forward? And the reason I ask that, and let me put it into context, so you understand kind of where I'm coming from. And I think this is what Commissioner Idlet is trying to determine. If the state knows that you are contemplating, and I say state DOT, contemplating going forward with a development that will have a material impact on the value of the land relative to their proposed terminus of a bridge going forward, i.e., it will make it go up, and it also will carry with it the attendant problems and issues with condemnations, which are very significant. Have they said anything at all? Have they acknowledged? Because I'm curious, because silence would be indicative of something. I don't know what, but it could be, I mean, for this board, for this board, maybe it, I don't know. Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just, the question stands, did DOT make any comments relative to your proposal to go forward with developing this land as it impacts their plans for a, plans for a
I would have to answer and say that we have laid out all the options to NC DOT as to what we can do versus selling the property to them or anybody, or recording the plat and selling the lots individually. It's been a time coming, and then we haven't heard a response from NC DOT as to their desire, or ultimate desire, to write a check. Obviously, we had conversation that they have interest because of the project that's been in the works for many years, but no.
Let me ask a question. I mean, we're beating around the bush. Has staff talked to anybody with DOT about this and got a response back? Mr. Scanlon, are you aware of any conversations? Are you at liberty to share any of it? Are you comfortable sharing any of it?
I'm certainly comfortable answering your question.
Okay.
What DOT's comment to me was, the project had to score and get on the tip before they could entertain conversations about right-of-way acquisition. Prior to the project being placed on the tip, funding was not available for them to have any conversation about right-of-way acquisition. The project was just placed on the tip within the last 30, 30-something, some odd days. So, prior to that, they were not in a position to move forward with any conversation that would actually require the outlay of funds.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to beat around the bush. I'm trying to get to the point, and the point being, I don't want to hurt our bridge project if we can help it. And if two weeks can give us that, give us that time to let DOT, you know what I'm getting at, just thinking, then I think that is a worthwhile deal, and if they don't, then these folks will be back up here, and we'll make a decision, be done with it.
I guess the reason I ask that is DOT is fully aware this property is, is going to be developed. DOT signs off on the special use permit, do they not?
Their staff-level DOT are review entities for these projects.
Did they review this one?
They made no comment, and that's why, that's why we, that's why we sent a message to the senior staff at DOT.
And they did?
They replied back and said, thanks for the heads up.
But as Mr. Scanlon said, there was no funding available or could not even be funded until about 30 days ago, when the bridge project come back on the transportation plan. So, that's, I mean, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make the motion and be done with it, but I would just ask if they would concur with that.
Let me close the public comment. Do you, gentlemen, any of y'all have any further comments?
I do. This project has been planned since really 2001, when it got started. 2002, '03, '04, '05, '06, we have a preliminary plan approval for this, and there were issues with wastewater, and then the new rules of the Corps of Engineers, we delayed things. And it was almost, we had construction drawings, permits from all the state agencies. DOT had approved it before for the driveway intersection or generation of the new drive. So, it's, who came first? It's not like they're jumping in front of an opportunity to make more money. They actually been holding and holding and holding, and I see their point. I also see that a bridge is coming, and DOT has not made any real conversations. I had in direct conversations with Jerry Jennings, the division engineer, and it's three sides, three sides landing. This happens to be one of the options, probably number one option, but there's no commitment. There's no.
Well, I will say this, if it is deferred for two weeks, we'll get a big message loud and clear.
Thank you, and if there'll be a commitment, or else, I'll make a motion to approve it.
We'll get a big message loud and clear. I understand what you're saying.
I think I understand what you're saying, too.
Now, we like what you're saying. But before I finish, and because we do want to continue to move forward and develop some lots, we have bought a significant amount of wetland mediation credits from a bank or whatever. We at least would like to today request an approval to record the lots along the street that are currently developed and can be serviced within this existing infrastructure. If you have no objections, and you gentlemen, I at least would like to achieve that today, and again, does not impact, does not impact the bridge in what, any way whatsoever. We have looked at some drawings and overlays of the bridge. You can actually come in two or three lots even deeper from what the recorded lots are, so there's a significant buffer. If you at least grant us that piece that we could plat or at least submit to a preliminary plat approval.
And can you show the portion, is it that yellow and?
From the temporary cul-de-sac all the way to the entrance.
So, that's already got?
This, exactly, these, they're starting from this, yeah, well.
So, you see this plat, this?
Yeah.
That's where the road ends right now. So, I think these gentlemen are asking the lots that are circled in yellow to allow them to plat those, which would be on the existing road and wouldn't require.
Because they're developed, they have utilities to them, they can already be built upon, and once we fill them in, we'll be able to build and sell and increase tax base.
You're asking for the northern section, then, to be approved?
Yes.
What lot numbers are those?
Yeah, please.
If you have something.
What, say again, I'm sorry.
72 through 63.
63 through 72.
Yes.
No, no, this is basically, well, exactly, that's a good point. I would like to, let's say this is a compromise, so we would like to achieve this today, grant you the request that you're proposing for the two weeks for a yes or no answer. We're not looking for a maybe. We're looking for a yes or no, or some other arrangement that could be figured out, and we'll meet again two weeks from now and discuss this further.
Then I thank you for that.
All right. Any other questions? We'll close the public hearing. Mr. Woody, is that an acceptable motion for the board to make to do 62 through 70, 63 through 72?
I believe in Carlos or Mitch or whoever, so tell me, so which, is it 63 or 72 that starts at Devil's Bay?
72.
Okay, so 63, is 63 on the temporary cul-de-sac or just prior to it?
Just prior to.
Prior to the cul-de-sac.
I think that's acceptable, yes, because the bridge, the bridge right-of-way, I believe, is.
South of that.
Just south of that cul-de-sac, yeah.
On DOT plans, on DOT plans for those lots, they allow those lots.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, moving forward with lots 63 through 72, approve with staff findings and recommendations in the case analysis. Let's see, don't, let me get to my, let's see, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate facilities. Use will be in conformity with land use plan, will not endanger public safety and health, and let's see, will not injure the value of adjoining or budding lands. Also, I asked that staff provide or notify Department, DOT, ascertain, let them know what's going on with the rest of this, dealing with the terminus, and ask them to make a decision on what their plans are with this piece of property, and have some results back to us within two weeks, so this can come forward, and if they do not at that time, well, then we'll act on it at that time.
All right. We have a motion. All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Do you want to add to, at what level do you want to get a response from the state? Just a telephonic verbal, or would we want something for the record?
Uh...
An official.
An official, some kind of, the only thing I look at, yeah, I'm just, I don't want to get blamed down the road by the state for not doing the due diligence.
I don't either, so I, well, then I will assume some type of official correspondence.
That staff will generate tomorrow. He's got it half-written right now. He's halfway written it. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you for your patience.
See you in two weeks.
All right, next item is new business. A consideration in action on an ordinance amended Article II Sexually Oriented Businesses, Chapter Eight of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances. Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, given the late hour, I'll be brief. The purpose of this ordinance is to clarify a definition and modify some other areas of the ordinance which need clarification, and then lastly, to address the issue regarding potential secondary impacts of sexually oriented businesses adjacent to sensitive uses of property and to make this licenser ordinance consistent with the UDO and other county ordinances. I first would direct you to, after the extensive findings, and I'll get back to those in just a moment, to page 117 of your packet, I'm sorry, page 118 of your packet, line seventeen, the definition of adult live entertainer would be modified to, to make clear and provide that any person who is performing as an adult live entertainer is required to be licensed, whether that individual is an employee of the adult establishment or whether they are receiving a fee for performance. This is to ensure that everyone that's acting as an adult live entertainer is required to be licensed under this ordinance, so that things such as amateur nights or instances where independent contracting professionals come in for a one or two-night show, all would be required to comply with the license and requirements of the ordinance. The next proposed amendment would be on packet page 121, line seven, section, under Section eight dash fifty criminal penalty, would strike the word "following" in the first sentence of that section. This is necessary, as I set forth in my memorandum to the board, because there has been an incident within the last couple of years where individuals were charged with violating this ordinance, and they were relying upon, as part of their defense, the fact that the word "following" appeared in this section relative to criminal penalty, yet there's nothing "following" the criminal penalty language, so their argument to the court was they not violated anything and were not subject to criminal penalty. This would strike the language that obviously was erroneously included in the ordinance when it was adopted in 2003. Moving down below, Section eight dash five-one would amend at line twenty-six of that page, civil injunction to strike GS 168 dash 175, which relates to civil and equitable remedies for municipalities, and would replace that with Section one dash eight, which is a reference to the county's Code of Ordinances and the county's civil remedies for violations of this particular ordinance. And then lastly, the ordinance will add, going, going down below to line twenty-nine through line two of the next page of the agenda package, to conform with the Unified Development Ordinance's location and distance requirements for sexually oriented business, so that this language would, again, come into conformity with the Unified Development Ordinance and provide that a sexually oriented business may not locate within fifteen hundred feet in any direction in which another sexually oriented business is located. That is to prevent the over-concentration of sexually oriented businesses within one area of the county. Would prohibit the location within fifteen hundred feet of, from any building used as a residential dwelling or from a residential zoning district established by the Unified Development Ordinance. Would prohibit location within fifteen hundred feet from any direction from a building used as a religious institution, a school, a state-licensed daycare center, a public library, or any lot or parcel in which a public playground, public swimming pool or park is located, and then it provides for the method by which the measurement would be made. Again, this would be in conformity with the Unified Development Ordinance. I provided you with a relatively lengthy memorandum and also probably unusually lengthy findings of fact for this particular ordinance, because there is extensive, there are extensive case law from the United States Supreme Court on down, which speaks to the regulation of sexually oriented businesses by units of local government. You are authorized, of course, to regulate sexually oriented businesses, but you are to do so by taking into consideration, first of all, certain First Amendment rights to expression, and secondly, by taking into consideration the secondary impacts that sexually oriented businesses may have on sensitive areas or sensitive uses within a community. Now, to get to that point is necessary and incumbent upon a board to take into consideration studies that have been conducted of secondary or harmful impacts of sexually oriented businesses on these sensitive uses or areas. The United States Supreme Court and other courts have determined that it is not necessary for each community to do their own independent study, but they rely upon studies that have been generated in other communities throughout the United States. And so this, and you may also rely upon your staff's legal synopsis of those studies, so long as the studies have been made available to you and as, for your review should you desire, and as I set forth in my memorandum, there was a notebook of the studies that are discussed in my memorandum filed with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners for you to have the ability to review and take advantage of if you felt necessary as you make a determination to adopt this ordinance. I'm not going to go through each study. Again, it was provided in the memorandum that was provided to you, but bottom line is, these studies cover everything from a survey of Texas appraisers that was commissioned by the Texas City Attorneys Association, in which they found that there were detrimental and negative impacts, depending upon distance, upon residential neighborhoods and community shopping centers of various sexually oriented businesses, to a report in the City of Denver that took into consideration studies in twenty-one other jurisdictions to make a determination that, again, the location of sexually oriented businesses to these same type of adult, sensitive areas such as residential areas, parks, religious institutions, things of that, that nature, were seen to have suffered negative impacts from the location of such businesses near them. To a very interesting study from the village of Ellicottville, New York, which was a tourist community that actually adopted an ordinance and did a study in advance of any sexually oriented businesses locating within their community, but they made a determination from their study that, particularly in a community that relied greatly upon tourism as part of its economic development engine, that sexually oriented business over-concentration or location within certain sensitive areas was detrimental to the community and in particular to its economic development and vitality. To then the National Law Center for Children and Families, which looked at forty-three different jurisdictions as to what impact or effect sexually oriented businesses, businesses had of different types on these same type of sensitive land uses. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have after you've had read the memorandum about those. Also, a reference in the findings of fact and in the memorandum, other valid considerations for you to take, not the least of which is the findings made by the North Carolina General Assembly when it adopted 168 dash 181.1 of the North Carolina General statutes authorizing local government to adopt sex, regulation of sexually oriented businesses, which this county, of course, first did July 7th, 2003. That, again, is one of the findings and is a finding made by the state of North Carolina, that there indeed are negative impacts, secondary impacts of sexually oriented businesses, particularly as they are related to sensitive uses of land adjacent to them. Also have cited to you in the memo and as findings, the town of Naggshead and Dare County, which also relied upon extensively similar studies and making determinations that the location of sexually oriented businesses in certain sensitive areas within their communities was indeed detrimental to those communities and land uses, as well as the, the sensitive tourism development nature and a family-oriented beach community that those areas like to perpetuate. And then lastly, there's also a finding and study by the School of Government at University of North Carolina, which laid out and lays out again and analyzes some of these same studies and speaks to the authority of local government to regulate sexually oriented businesses. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I guess, first question I have is, as part of approval of this, we would need to include those findings and studies as part of the approval for the record?
It is indeed is set out, findings are set out in the preamble to the ordinance, so that would certainly be part of the record. And then by my recitation and provision of this memorandum to you, that's part of the record as well, referencing those, those studies which were made available for the board la, last week.
All right, questions?
Good, good thing they ain't studied Myrtle Beach.
Pictures for you either, Vance. There's no pictures in the studies.
Where do you, where do you...
Ain't my cup of tea, buddy, I tell you that.
I was going to say, what are you trying to tell us?
Ain't my cup of tea.
So we need a motion from the board for approval or denial?
Add, Mr. Chairman, that for any, any entity that is not in conformity with the required locational requirements, they will have until January 1, 2016 to comply. You have the authority to amortize certain uses that are not in compliance relative to sexually oriented businesses, but must give them some opportunity in which to recoup any investment they, they might have made prior to non-compliance.
So what you're saying to me is then we don't have to grandfather anybody in after 2016?
That's correct.
So we need a motion for approval?
I make a motion for approval, including the summaries.
I have a motion for approval from Ms. Gilbert, including the summaries and reports that Mr. McCree had prepared. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next item is ground lease at Maple Commerce Park with Cisco Hampton Roads, Inc. I guess Mr. Bishop is going to present that to us.
Peter is still here?
Yes, sir, I am, as are all of you, and congratulations for an excellent evening.
Probably been down out of nap, that's what it is.
No, sir, no, sir. I am here to talk about a ground lease. Thank you, Mr. Woody, for pulling up the area or the premises that we are discussing leasing. I have a draft lease together that would be for your signature. We're looking at thirty-day terms here, so not a long-term lease, however, it is automatically renewable with a sixty-day cancellation period. What we would be doing on this site is very similar to what was done previously. This was the former bus parking area on county property. If you'll recall, the Board of Commissioners approved, and we have since constructed a new bus parking area on Barco Way in the Currituck Community Park region, so this area is lying available and is being, not being used by the county for any purpose. We were approached by Cisco Hampton Roads for a drop site location, and I conferred with our planning staff and county manager, and we thought this would be an appropriate place for them to have a temporary use. Long-term, for the airport development plan, there is a hangar building at some point to be constructed in this area. This is all a crush-and-run and gravel base, so it's a good building construction footprint. However, those plans and priorities are not for some time in the future, so there are no imminent building plans on this site. We have an opportunity to make some additional income at the airport and accommodate a corporate client. It seems like a good fit for the county, and that is why I'm presenting it to you today.
Mr. McCree, have you reviewed the proposed lease?
I have, Mr. Chairman. It's acceptable and I recommend its approval.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just what kind of vehicles are they going to be parking there?
They will have up to three thirty-two-foot trailers, reefer boxes there, and occasionally a tractor overnight, but they're, the intent is only for trailers to be there, a small storage shed, and if it does, if it meets our FAA and airport and UDO guidelines, they may erect a solar-powered lighting fixture.
Is the lease based on units that are stored on the site or the overall site itself?
They requested it to be based on units stored on-site, but county staff did not want to get into a game of counting trailers on a daily basis, so we just negotiated a single even rate every month.
They're currently operating just north of Bell's Island Road, so that's, that's what you're looking at being relocated here.
North of Bell's Island Road.
So it's cleaning, it's cleaning up the corridors, what you're telling me?
Yes, we're, we would be taking a quasi-industrial use that was under a variance on the highway and moving it into a industrial-zoned industrial park.
Where it belongs.
Yes, that's correct.
And this building, you're saying it's a temporary building?
It would just be a very small storage building. There are no plans for any construction on this site.
And in the contract, no repairs to be made on-site?
No, sir, the, the only, there is nothing in the contract that requires the county to make any explicit improvements. We have discussed with the LSE putting in a new entrance to Terminal Way in that sort of, I guess, southern corner of the property nearby there with a concrete culvert and some crush-and-run, but that's not either, that's not an imminent project either. We'd like to consider that in some cost estimates.
And then also, no repairs by the company to work on their vehicles on our lot?
No, sir, that is not a permitted use under this lease.
Payman, you had something?
Yes, with the type of vehicles that are going to be located there and the type of surface that you had mentioned, do we have any concerns with any environmental fluid leakage or anything in that with those type of vehicles that'll be parked there over a long-term period of time?
I think it's just trailers.
Yeah. You said refrigeration units too as well, and anything...
On the trailer, a reefer trailer.
So no, no, no hydraulic fluids or anything like that could be leaking out brakes or anything?
I mean, there are hydraulic systems on the trailer, yes.
So there's no concern with them being parked over there, is my question, then?
Well, as the previous use was parking of school buses, and it's a very similar use, and I, I don't know that we...
We never had any issues with that in the past.
Not that I'm aware of.
That they, they also are required within the lease to not allow for the disposal or loss of hazardous waste on the property, and they will indemnify or hold the county harmless and for many damages that may be caused.
In this specific case, Commissioner Payman, we actually increased the required insurance to cover any potential liability to the fuel farm or the fencing or anything else out there.
I believe it's within sight distance of the airport where you guys are out...
That is correct.
...on a regular basis, so you can keep an eye on.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Or do we get a motion?
We didn't get a motion yet.
It's getting late. Do we have a motion for approval?
I motion for approval.
Commissioner, you have a hand in the back of the room.
If I, if I, if I may ask a question?
I don't even see anybody.
I just have a general question, two questions, actually. They're right now on the Brumsey Farm, where that blinking light blinks all night long.
Yes, sir.
And they have refrigeration units, and you can hear them from the highway. When they moved to this site, how close is that to the people that live in Ben's Barco Way, that they're going to be able to hear that? And where are the tractor-travers going to access the site, through Maple Road or on 158?
I think that's a good question, Mr. Bishop.
I'll do my best to answer those two questions. First, there, I don't believe there's a dwelling unit within a half-mile of the site, probably closer to a mile away, and that would be to the north rather than the south, so we're, I think we're pretty well protected from any impacts to residents. On the second question, I could answer better where they will access this specific site rather than how they will get to Shortcut Road 158. Whether they'll take 168 or Maple Road, I really cannot speak to.
Well, I'd like to speak to that. Well, I'd like to speak to that, we don't need trucks down Maple Road.
Exactly.
That is, that is something with the waste management people. With these people or whatever, Maple Road is a very narrow, uh, road with, with the low speed limit and residential. And I just think that we do need to emphasize that they don't need to be exiting or, or coming on Maple Road, that.
Can't, can't you petition DOT and have a no-through truck signs posted there?
Well, they have a, they have a place on Maple Road, so, but I would like for us to try to ask them to not use Maple Road.
I agree, but isn't that, wouldn't that be the proper thing to do to? The county don't have the authority to do no-through.
Correct, correct, we, we have no authority on the regulation of the road. We certainly can request or, or, or appeal to the company not to use that road. My understanding of how the site will be used is actually to serve their, their southern market, their Dare County market. I would anticipate from that the more logical transportation route's gonna be one fifty-eight. But we certainly can appeal to them to, to not travel on one, on, on Maple Road.
They, they got to get a truck there to pick up the trailers, like, the gentleman's got a good point, but, uh.
Well, I think Vance made a good point too, is asking DOT for no-through traffic.
That's, that's what I would suggest.
Traffic is just gonna increase on that road with what's going on in Maple and if we don't do something.
Yeah.
And think about it now, it's just gonna get worse.
I agree.
So. Um, we have a motion for approval.
And I'll amend that to include the appeal to the company about not going down Maple Road.
And we had a second, but.
I don't have a second yet.
Who wants to step up and be number two?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Paul Beaumont, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, as a separate notion, I would, unless the board objects, like to ask the manager to talk to DOT about no-through trucks.
Yes.
Through Maple Road, that's been brought up before with the garbage trucks. Next item is consent agenda.
For approval.
Have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye? Oppose, Commissioners report, Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing to report.
Mike?
Nothing at this time.
David?
I don't think I have anything, I'm too tired to remember, but, uh.
Mr., Mr. Vance?
I don't have anything to report, I have a question for the manager. Remember sometime back a few, probably meetings ago, requested that a letter be sent to. Cox Cable and also the phone provider.
Yes, sir.
Internet connectivity.
Yes, sir.
Over in the Gibbs Woods area, did we ever get an answer back from them?
We didn't, we never got an answer back from, from Verizon or Cox.
Well, Verizon, it wasn't Verizon, it was the MediaCom, I think.
Media, well, MediaCom has been in conversation with us, but we've never heard from Cox.
Never heard anything from Cox.
Did not.
Do we still have a government liaison contact point?
Uh, we do.
Would you please give him a call and note, remind him of that and ask him, or tell him that we, we certainly would like to have. Or request of him to give us a, an answer back?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Payment?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Gilbert? Only thing I would say is a follow-up to Mr. Idlet's request. I also asked for a follow-up request to Century Link. After they came and talked to us about, uh, high-speed internet services and did we ever hear anything back from them?
I did actually talk to him again and he was, I had actually asked him for. Um, through the federal program that we can get some type of grant money. They're trying to amend the one hundred percent, I guess, requirement for access, internet access. So if they're able to get that down, then they can consider going in and.
I had to look his card up again.
Mr. O'Neil, you, you, I think you're correct. Century Link is the other one, I, what MediaCom was it, it was Century Link?
Well, we sent it to MediaCom, we sent it to all three, actually.
Okay, great, good.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, sir, just real quickly, um, uh, Bill Brumsey has contacted me, he is the attorney for the Game Commission. Uh, the Board of Commissioners asked that letters be written to, um, both offices of the US Fish and Wildlife. Uh, we're gonna be working in conjunction with Mr. Brumsey in, uh, sending a joint letter. And, uh, he and I will be preparing that letter to send out. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Well, I have a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.